I would like to now call to order the March the 7th, 2023 School Board meeting for the Lynchburg City School Board. And as we call our meeting to order tonight, we are grateful for the opportunity to serve and to come as a governing body to make the best decisions possible to move our school division forward. Having said that, I would like now for Section B, each board member, you have had the opportunity to see the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the March the 7th meeting?
A move that we approve the agenda for the March the 7th meeting.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Day. Any further questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the room.
School Board Member Mr. Trust.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta. Sorry, not present. School Board Member Dr. Day.
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much. I do want to also express to the board that School Board Members Gloria Preston and Atul Gupta will not be with us tonight. We do have a quorum, and we will proceed accordingly and make sure that our board members are up to date on any matters necessary for tonight's meeting. Section C is a notice for a closed meeting, and as permitted by the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A2, the School Board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing or considering of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record concerning a student. And as I bring this motion before you, when we pass it, we're going to stand and do the pledge of allegiance before we go to the room. All right. Anyone want to make that motion for it to go into closed meeting?
I so move.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by School Board Member Trust, seconded by Carter, that we will go into closed meeting. Any further questions or discussion on the matter? Madam Clerk, please call the room.
School Board Member Mr. Trust.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Day.
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Before we go into closed meeting, we're going to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, which is very important for us to do.
Let's read just to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
In the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I do want to let the public know that we are going to hopefully be no longer than 30, 35 minutes. It is our hope, but we're going to be back as quickly as we can. And so we're now in closed meeting.
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 599 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 799 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 999 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099 1100 1101 1102 1103 1104 1105 1106 1107 1108 1109 1110 1111 1112 1113 1114 1115 1116 1117 1118 1119 1120 1121 1122 1123 1124 1125 1126 1127 1128 1129 1130 1131 1132 1133 1134 1135 1136 1137 1138 1139 1140 1141 1142 1143 1144 1145 1146 1147 1148 1149 1150 1151 1152 1153 1154 1155 1156 1157 1158 1159 1160 1161 1162 1163 1164 1165 1166 1167 1168 1169 1170 1171 1172 1173 1174 1175 1176 1177 1178 1179 1180 1181 1182 1183 1184 1185 1186 1187 1188 1189 1190 1191 1192 1193 1194 1195 1196 1197 1198 1199
Mr. Charleston will be ready to start just a minute.
At this time, the Chair would like to entertain a motion for us to come out of our closed meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, so the motion is made by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan, that we would come out of a closed meeting. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Scoop up member, Mr. Charleston.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Sinai.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries.
As permitted by the Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A2, I would now like for us to certify that in the closed-meeting convened, for the purpose of discussing or consideration of admission or discipline matters or any other matters, that all that was discussed was pertaining to that and nothing else. Madam Clerk?
Scoop up member, Mr. Charleston.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Sinai.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm asking this if, in fact, all board members will agree. We did approve the agenda tonight, but I think this is a simple switch. Would there be any challenge with us doing E first and then go to D? Which would be our student representative comments and follow that with public comments.
I make a mo— I mean, you want a motion for that, or do you—
If everybody accepts, I think we'd be all right.
I accept it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to now go to Dr. Edwards for our student representative comments.
Thank you for that and thank you for helping me get my young ones home a little earlier tonight. I think Mrs. Lee is still upstairs, so I am going to switch the order of our student reps. And just for those who may be joining us for the first time, we have invited student reps from all of our schools to join us at school board meetings to share some of the wonderful things that are happening at our elementary, middle, middle schools, our virtual academy, and other schools in addition to our two high school reps. So tonight, we have with us, from our virtual academy, we have the principal, Josh Boyd, who is here. And we have several students from our virtual academy who are here with Mr. Boyd. And we have Reagan Erskine, Moses Erskine, Gemma Sheets, Gabe Garrett, and Savannah Hicks.
Awesome, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Gabe actually could not make it, and Savannah is on Zoom, so when we get to her, she will share her piece. But, Dr. Coleman, members of the school board, and Dr. Edwards, good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you all for allowing us to speak to you this evening. We have four wonderful students with us who would like to share their educational experiences at LVA with you. They will share what a school day is like for them, the personal connections with teachers and classmates that they've made, and what other opportunities they've had while attending LVA. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Ms. Reagan Erskine.
Hi, my name is Reagan Erskine, and I'm in third grade. Here's our typical day at the virtual academy. We all get on Zoom at eight o'clock, and we all get to watch morning announcements with Mr. Boyd. After announcements, our teacher takes attendance, and then we jump into our day. In third grade, we have math, reading, and then either science or social studies. After Zoom, we do homework, and we have help sessions if we need them. We use at-home learning kits and other websites like Brainin' Camp and iExcel. Sometimes we have celebrations in class, and if everyone shows up with their cameras, thank you.
Aw, thank you, Reagan.
Hi, my name is Moses Erskine, and I'm in the third grade. We also have clubs. I enjoy the outdoors club. I get to see my friends and play with them outside once a month. We also have in-person events. We also have field trips, thank you.
Okay. Savannah is on Zoom, so can we get Savannah? We can't hear you. We can't hear you yet, Savannah, give us a second.
Make sure, is she muted on her end?
You're fixing microphones. Try it now, Savannah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Hi, as Mr. Boyd mentioned, my name is Savannah Hicks, and I'm a 10th grader currently attending the virtual academy. When Mr. Boyd approached me with the prospect of speaking to you all about the program, I knew I'd do it because of how great the Lynchburg Virtual Academy is. I'd like to highlight staff, and more specifically, Aquila Green, my Geo trig teacher. Math and science have never been my favorite subjects. That being said, I've never felt more accepted in a math class than I do in Mrs. Green's. If I ever have an issue understanding the curriculum, she is quick to make videos for me, log on Zoom, even if it's outside of her office hours, send me extra notes, and et cetera. She always has different ways to teach topics up her sleeve. It's clear that she's dedicated to making sure every single one of her students log out feeling more confident than they did when they logged in. Enrolling in the Lynchburg Virtual Academy has expanded my knowledge in more ways than I can list. I think there is a common misconception that the virtual academy is completely virtual, which is understandable, however, it isn't. We have in-person events at the end of every month, we have field trips, we have many fun activities as well, such as clubs, mock trials, et cetera. I say all of this to say, virtual academy is more than a computer screen, it's a genuine experience. Thank you.
You want to make sure the mic is adjusted so that we can hear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Gemma Sheets, and I'm a 6th grader at the Lynchburg Virtual Academy. I can't wait to tell you all the awesome things about this school. First of all, I love all my teachers. They make a lot of the class enjoyable and fun to learn different things. They are also great with getting in contact if I need help with anything or if I have a question. Another great thing is the in-person events we often have. A good example of this is our field trips. We go to a lot of different places that have really cool backgrounds and historical significance. I went to the Ann Spencer House for one of my field trips, and it was really interesting and fun. There are also regular in-person days where we do interactive learning activities, where I have made many friends that are now very close to me. Also, we have a big variety of different clubs. Some examples, some examples of these are the Art Club, Outdoor Club, and Photography Club. Each one of them is very interesting, and I learn a new thing every time I go to one. I'm able to self-paced myself with my work and get done earlier than normal. There is a lot of flexibility when it comes to classes, due dates, and independent activities. Thank you.
That's it?
Okay. Don't go anywhere, because I have a, I have a special gift for my student reps.
You all come back.
So don't, don't leave, don't leave. We also have, from Sheffield Elementary, we have Principal Lisa Lee, who is here with us, and our student rep from Sheffield, Jackson Brown.
All right, I just want to introduce to you a fabulous 5th grade student. He has lots of super experiences to share with you. He is a great leader, his teachers quickly advised him as being a great speaker for our school, so Jackson Brown.
Good evening, school board and more. My name is Jackson Brown, I'm a 5th grade student at Sheffield Elementary. Fortunately, I have been a, been a student at this school since kindergarten. And I am excited to share all of the things that make our school a special place every day. I love the leadership opportunities that students, especially 5th graders, get to participate in. This year, our school brought back the Safety Patrol. Members of the Safety Patrol model good citizenship for other students by being safe, respectful, and responsible. We get to help out in the hallways, another fun leadership experience is leading the morning announcements. We get to lead the school in the Pledge of Allegiance and upcoming events. At Sheffield, we have high expectations for academics and behavior. Each quarter, we come together to celebrate good citizens in each class attendance, behavior, and grades. It is always fun to cheer on our classmates. Students can earn certificates to Seaquest and Golden Corral. At the end of the second quarter, we had a new experience. One community, One Voice, came to our school and gave away four bikes to students that have been working hard and making progress. We were also excited to see who won. Yeah, one of my best friends actually won a bike. Of course, every student loves a field trip. Earlier this year, 5th grade took a trip to Mayor Museum to enjoy art. Soon, soon 5th grade will head to the Pamplin Historical Park to experience the life of a soldier. Some of the field trips other grades are experiencing this year are Seaquest, Amazement Square, Richmond Zoo, and Jamestown. The very best part of Sheffield is the students, our teachers, staff, and families. Many of the students at Sheffield are learning English as, as a second language, and are bilingual. We learn just as much from other kids as we learn from our teachers. Before winter break, we had a school-wide sing-along with songs from all over the world that celebrate different customs. Many of our families came to sing along with us. Our PTO put on a Winter Wonderland story, and every single student got, got tiger bucks so they could pick out a gift for, to give to someone special to them. Our teachers come to school every day with a smile and work hard to help us learn and grow. They, they plan exciting lessons like our annual SciFest. For SciFest, the entire school spent the day doing fun science experiments, and that night, our families were invited back to the school to join in on the fun with us. Our PTO provided dinner for— Our PTO provided dinner for, for each family, and we had different stations that include electrical circuits, watersheds, simple machines, and more. We also got to use our creative minds and ended the night with a pumpkin decorating contest. Some of the winners included, included pumpkin decorated, uh, like desserts, and they were very realistic. We had over 300 students and family members attend this event. Playground was packed. La- last week, we celebrated Read Across America. The, the book fair was at our school, and our families were invited to come shop with us. Uh, every student was able to pick out a new book. Family Literacy, Literacy Night was on Thursday, Thursday. Each family got a pizza and learned how to support reading in the home. We also got to see Skorum, the second grade play. The cafeteria was full. The second graders worked hard and did a great job singing and dancing. Last thing I would like to say is that Sheffield is a place where I have made wonderful memories and have learned a lot along the way. Anytime I have a new interest like Titanic or the history of war, my school supports it and helps me to find books that relate to the topic. I will miss this school next year, but I know that they have done a good job in preparing me for middle school. I hope you all have a wonderful night. Thank you for letting me share.
So hopefully, you can see what we do to close the achievement gap. Uh, weaved into all of that, Science Night throughout the school, family engagement. I think you talked about literacy. Uh, my virtual academy kids made it real clear, it's not just a screen. It's an experience with field trips and clubs and engaging activities. And there's a lot going on in math and science that support this. And that's what we're about with, when we talk about the whole child. How do we combine all of the experiences to help children as they're on their journey, in this learning journey that they have? So I'd like to thank them for being here. You all know it's not easy to speak in front of all of us and on television where everybody else is going to be watching, but they did a fabulous job doing that. So let's give them one more round of applause. And then I do have special gifts for you all, and we will take a picture. So I'm going to ask the students to come up into the horseshoe here along with their two fabulous principals.
You did a great job, both, both groups. Great group of young people. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Just wonderful, wonderful sharing tonight from the virtual academy and Sheffield Elementary. Thank you all both for coming tonight. And now we'll hear from our student representatives. Always grateful to hear from Caitlin and Cameron in that order.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've got a very busy month this month. I know I say that every month, but. First off, our track team, both the boys and girls indoor track team, both won the state championship.
Good, great.
This is the first boys indoor track state championship since 2006, so that's very exciting. Our wrestling team competed in states on February 18th. Dylan Lamar, Justin Porter, and Marques Wood, all placed in their, in each of their respective categories. Very exciting there as well. February 6th through 10th was National School Counseling Week. Shout out to our counselors, Mrs. Hester, Ms. Baker, Mrs. Beckles, and Ms. Davis. They are all incredibly helpful, especially this being my senior year. It's been really wonderful to work with them. Scholarships, college, applications, all of that stuff. Pioneer Theater had two successful weekends of performances of cabaret. On their closing performance, they celebrated a senior night. All of the seniors were honored by underclassmen. It was a very nice event. The Pathways to Graduation event was at Heritage. The Beacon of Hope participated at this event, and students and parents could see all of the special programs and clubs that Heritage offers. This was very exciting. Like I said, each of the clubs, they had a table for themselves. There's a band table and an orchestra table, and they could kind of walk through the common area and just see what Heritage has to offer. Our cosmetology program, the students competed in Skills USA district competition earlier this month. Seven students placed, and three will move on to states. Our cosmetology program's really interesting too, because we have glass students who come over to Heritage to take the class. So it was kind of a combined effort, and the students that placed were a mix of Heritage and Glass students. And lastly, our forensics team, Nisha Mangrati, placed first in the regional competition for forensics poetry. She'll be competing at states later this month, and she's actually the first pioneer in five years to make it this far. And that's all. Thank you.
Excellent job, Caitlin. Thank, thank you for, that's powerful. All right, Cameron.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've also had a very busy month at Glass. On February 25th, our indoor drumline, the Lynchburg City Combined, which includes all of our high schools and our middle schools, they placed first at the Atlantic Indoor Association Competition out of eight bands across the state. Our forensics are the super region runners-up. Congrats to Sophia Hop, who is the poetry champion for our region. Congrats also to Bria Cypher, Luke King, and Amari Dop, who will all represent EC Glass at states. We are so excited to welcome our new football coach, Jamar Lovelace. He has 12 years of experience and is coming to us from William Fleming High School. We are also so excited to say that he is LCS's first African-American head coach. Our boys soccer team will be having a fundraiser car wash this weekend. And our boys basketball will be at state finals this Thursday in Richmond, which we are so, so excited about. And our school has two charter buses currently taking students to the game on Thursday to have school spirit. And good luck to our basketball teams as they play Verena, I'm pretty sure, for the championship on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. People are excited about that. Thank both of you. As we are now in March and moving closer and closer to, to June, thank you both for doing such a great job, uh, as you have shared tonight and, and in the past where you've had opportunity. All right, thank you both, and that ends our student representative section. Again, very beautiful presentation from the virtual academy in Sheffield as well. We're going to go back now to D, which is public comment. And I do want to read that person's appearance before the school board would not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and the responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson, and the total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings typically is 30 minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. And the clerk has shared with me our list for tonight, and of course, we start with a student if we have one, then move to our parents, and then community members. There are no students for tonight. So we're going to move right to the parent category, and we welcome tonight Jessica Coleman, who is coming as an individual to speak to us tonight about some of Governor Youngkin's proposals. That person here? All right. Might I ask, are there any voicemails or anything like that for tonight?
It is one voicemail.
That mail may not be that person, so we'll come back to that.
It's not that person.
Oh, it's not? Okay. Well, we're going to move on now. And I'm going to go to the top of the list, and we'll go to Vincent Gonzalez, who is going to come to us from the Lynchburg Immigrant Support Group.
Hi, my name is Vicente. I'm queer and non-binary. I'm an alumnus of Lynchburg City Schools, and I'm here to discuss the lack of support for LGBTQ students in LCS. First, I would like to applaud LCS for updating the anti-discrimination policy on the LCS website. This is a great first step in making the anti-discrimination policy more accessible to families and students. What we need now is this policy to be enforced. We need more comprehensive training for teachers, faculty, and staff around LGBTQ issues, and a more transparent and accessible process for addressing discrimination, bullying, and harassment. We also need LCS to begin to prepare for the push for Governor Youngkin's 2022 model policies which target transgender students. Policies which many members of city council openly support and intend to have passed in LCS. These policies would push transgender students towards higher rates of depression, substance abuse, houselessness, and even self-harm and suicide. I urge Lynchburg City Schools to take lead from other Virginia school districts, which have already passed resolutions rejecting these policies. There is a clear effort to deny transgender students equal access to public education under the guise of parental rights. What does that even mean? And which parents? Who decides that? What about the parents of queer and transgender students? What about queer parents? This argument is not practical and should not be utilized in any conversations by this board regarding policy. Also, it is extremely concerning that the school board voted on an opt-in policy pushed by city council. That is not the city council's role. We also know that many members of city council have publicly attacked queer and transgender students, have supported measures which would eliminate programs which celebrate diversity, and are working with constituents actively pushing to defund public education. Are these the voices that we are choosing to prioritize when it comes to our students, when it comes to our public schools? There is already a process in place when it comes to proposing policy. It is Dr. Edwards who is already under the direction of the Virginia Boards, Virginia School Boards Association. It is Dr. Edwards who has the experience and professional background to formulate policy. It was Dr. Edwards who was vetted and chosen by this community, and it is she who should be presenting policy to this board, not city council. It is also concerning that even after multiple teachers from LCS presented their case in front of this board, several members chose to ignore them and vote in favor of the opt-in policy. What message does that send to our students? And now city council wants the school board to become an elected body, because they know these positions will go to candidates who have access to the most wealth, when in our school system, 62% of students are disadvantaged economically. Who will speak up for them? Who will run on their behalf? We are facing major potential changes in Lynchburg City schools, and it is black youth, disabled youth, undocumented and immigrant youth, and queer and transgender youth who are most at risk. I urge the Lynchburg City Schools administration to take action now to prepare for the potential sweeping actions against diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to protect queer and transgender youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicente Gonzalez, for your sharing tonight. And I'm going to go to our next group here, and Nicole Spangenberg is the Queer Town Hall Organization.
Give me one second to pull up my.
Take your time.
Good evening, school board. Good evening, school board. My name is Nicole Spangenberg, and I use she/her pronouns. I'm a queer, disabled, social worker with an MSW, and I'm representing Queer Town Hall. I have a special interest in working for and with LGBTQIA+ adults and youths. A mentor once said to me, "How we do the work is just as important as the work we do." Today, I'm asking you to turn this anti-discrimination policy, which as mentioned, we appreciate you bringing forward onto the website more visibly, and turning that into practice. A policy is nothing if it is not implemented effectively. I will bring attention to the glaring urgent needs for change and provide examples of what new professional development needs to cover. Students are seeing news spread across the internet about adults in power making decisions to eradicate transgenderness, which can only be interpreted as attempts to eradicate transgender people. Nerissa Rahaman, Executive Director of Equality Virginia, said, "Even though these policies aren't in place yet, it's causing harm." Polling shows that 85% of transgender and non-binary youth, and 2/3 of all LGBTQ youth, say that recent debates around anti-trans bills have negatively impacted their mental health. Research shows that transgender youth are at higher risk of suicide because of living with transphobia, trauma, discrimination, and other threats to their safety. A 2017 study by the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network found that nearly 84% of transgender students and 70% of gender expansive students were bullied or harassed at school. There's a misunderstanding and lack of knowledge about their lives. When these students do not feel affirmed or safe, they cannot learn or participate in school activities effectively. Schools must be proactive in creating change. Now is the time. Today, a Lynchburg City school counselor shared a story with me of a student that they're working with facing constant bullying he's been experiencing about his sexuality. He does not feel a sense of belongingness, and he responds with anger, a reasonable response to a threat. When we are threatened, our bodies go into survival mode of fight, flight, or freeze. From there, we cannot learn. We cannot make rational decisions. Many students experience this distress every day, and bullying based on queerness is just one example. Imagine yourself being questioned and tested by your adults and peers about whether your lived experience is correct, whether your body is correct, at a time when your body is already growing and changing. Imagine being in a classroom with your body signaling that there's an emergency, and you're expected to remain calm and collected. We need to make sure that school is a place all students feel safe and calm. Queer students feel safe. Black students feel safe. Disabled students feel safe. Undocumented students feel safe, where a queer, black, disabled, undocumented student can feel safe, without a threat to their lives, without a threat of being removed from school, or being sent down the school-to-prison pipeline. Research shows that it is vital for students to have at least one trusted adult in their life, at least one. The role model effect is huge. For black students to have at least one black teacher dramatically improves the likelihood of them graduating high school and of them attending college. For LGBTQ youth, at least one accepting adult reduces the risk of a suicide attempt by 40%. The next step with this LGBTQ plus anti-discrimination policy is training and professional development for all staffs and teachers. An example of what this professional development needs to cover, I'll take lead from our neighboring county of Albemarle. For their professional development, they outline eight areas. Current terms and concepts on the understanding of gender. Developmentally appropriate strategies for communicating with students and parents about student privacy. Federal and state laws. School planning guide for gender expansive students. Equal access to fac- equal access to facilities and activities, classroom management practices, and medical and physical considerations of safe transitioning for transgender students in accordance with their medical professional. Nia Ola said that people need more than anger to thrive. People need more than sorrow to see a path forward. All people deserve respect, dignity, and protection when they're being targeted for something like their identity, especially when that person is black, disabled, undocumented, queer, already struggling so much in this society. We need to protect them in schools. We can do better to protect everyone in schools. For students and others listening today, you're not alone. We are here. Nothing will happen about us without us. If you're struggling today, the new helpline number is nine-eight-eight, and the new text helpline number is seven-four-one-seven-four-one. We are here, we are queer, and we are not going to stop fighting for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole Spangenberg. All right, we will now hear from Mr. Phil Stump, who is coming to us as an individual tonight to talk about nondiscrimination policy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you today as a former teacher, as a parent, and a grandparent. All three of my children attended Lynchburg City Schools from K through twelve, and I am so thankful for the education they received. At the last school board meeting, several of us addressed the district's policies regarding nondiscrimination with regard to LGBTQIA+ or queer students. However, at that meeting, the related issue of opt-in and opt-out took priority, and I want to thank the school board, as Vicente did, for their wise decision to continue its opt-out policy. Today, I would like to return to the anti-discrimination policies regarding queer students. As I explained at the last meeting, I am the grandparent of a child who is exploring his gender identity. Born a girl, he identifies in most situations as a boy. He lives in a school district in another state where teachers and administrators have not discriminated against him. In fact, they have been exceedingly supportive to him and helpful in preventing discrimination and bullying by other students. And quite frankly, they have probably helped to save his life. His school district has clearly stated anti-discrimination policies that are public and are implemented in practice. I want to strongly encourage our school district to do the same. Please do not listen to the voices that would divide us by fomenting fear among us. Our district has developed good anti-discrimination policies with regard to queer students. Now, we need to make those policies known to all teachers, staff, and students, and develop protocols for enforcing them. Queer students need to know to whom they can turn when they are being bullied, and they need to find support when they turn to a teacher or staff member. And that teacher or staff member needs to be trained to know how to provide that support. One simple step that could be taken right away is to provide training for proper use of students' desired pronouns. I forwarded to all school board members a short and very well-crafted video that could be used for this training. Many other resources are also available for those who are of goodwill. What it really boils down to is a matter of what Aretha Franklin calls "respect", "respect for differences". It is similar to respect for the different ethnicities, cultures, and racial histories of our students. Our learning about and practicing this respect can truly be a matter of life and death for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phil Stump. And our last speaker in person, we welcome Jeffrey Wooters, who's coming to talk to us also in regards to anti-discrimination policy.
Thank you. In accordance with the law, the board prohibits harassment against students, employees, or others on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, political affiliation, sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, age, marital status, pregnancy, childbirth, or other related medical conditions, military status, ethnic information, disability, or any other characteristic protected by law based on a belief that such characteristic exists, hereafter referred to as protected group status at school or at any school-sponsored activity. Student or school personnel harassment based on the aforementioned characteristics or any other characteristic protected by law by any student or school personnel at school or any school-sponsored activity is a violation of this policy. Further, it is a violation of this policy for any school personnel to tolerate such harassment directed towards a student or employee at school or any school-sponsored activity. Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Wooters. I'm a first-year at the University of Virginia. I'm also a graduate of E.C. Glass High School and Central Virginia Governor's School, class of 2022. You know, I've spoken at this podium a lot about different sorts of issues. I've talked about masks. I've talked about science. I've talked about critical race theory. I've talked about all sorts of topics. And I've been very privileged to speak from a disconnected perspective who doesn't have to deal with the ramifications of what those policies entail for our most vulnerable students, and I don't have that luxury tonight. I am gay. I've known this about myself about, since about halfway through sixth grade. So I've spent six and a half years, half of my LCS career, being a member of the LGBTQ community. And I'd love to tell you that listing that anti-discrimination policy works. Let me tell you a quick story. I'm going to set the scene. I'm in my 10th grade history class, and I've got my head down. I'm working on a paper. And two kids behind me are joking around, pushing each other, chatting it up. And one of them turns to the other, and they say, "Take that hat off. You look like a..." I'm not going to say the word, but suffice it to say, it rhymes with "hag". And he said it loud enough that the entire room heard and burst out laughing. And you'd think something would have been done about that, but it wasn't. He was taken out into the hall, and I was sure he was very contrite and very apologetic. And he came back in, and he sat back down with this wide grin on his face. And he was in class the next day, and the day after that, and the day after that one, and nothing happened. LCS says a lot. There are stickers on every door at E.C. Glass, or almost every door, I should say, that say, you know, "This is a safe space. We've got teachers with pride flags in our classrooms. We've got anti-discrimination policies", which, incidentally, to find that one, I had to go through three pages that resulted in an error four oh four. But we need something more. We need these policies to actually be enforced. We need greater training for our teachers on how to deal with students in situations like this one. It's not enough just to pay lip service. We actually have to take action for our most vulnerable students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey Wooters. Thank all of you for your in-person presentations tonight. And the clerk has informed us that we have one voicemail, so we will listen to that at this time.
Hi, this is a message for the LCS School Board. Greetings, Chairman Dr. Coleman, Vice Chairman Dr. Brennan, ladies and gentlemen of the LCS School Board. My name is Zach Cronavas. I want to say that LCS has great programs for academically and intellectually gifted students, such as RS-Pain Go Center, Darrington and T.C. Miller Innovation Program, Dunbar Middle School Innovation Programs, the DEPTH Program in the elementary setting, as well as advanced and AP classes in the secondary setting, the Governor's School located at the Heritage Campus, and the STEM Academy located at the CBCC Campus. I was wanting to address the DEPTH Program in that the gifted classes are done by the instructional coaches. I would love to see the DEPTH Program expand to all elementary schools and possibly the middle schools in the district, as well as have the position of the gifted teacher and instructional coaches to be separate positions, with the exception of Bats Elementary due to its small size and year-round calendar. By splitting up these positions, this will be very beneficial so that the coaches can spend more time with the faculty to provide instructional support for them, as well as to observe and coach the new teachers in the campuses, and so that the gifted teachers can spend more time on lesson planning, as well as instructional delivery for the resource classes of gifted students in various locations, such as elementary and middle school campuses. Thank you for your time and support, and I hope the best for you. And once again, thank you for all what you do for the LCS faculty, staff, and family members and students. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Well, thank you for sharing with us.
Hi, this is a message for the LCS School Board. Greetings, Chairman Dr. Coleman, Vice Chairman Dr. Brennan, ladies and gentlemen of the LCS School Board. My name is Zach Cronavas.
We need to hear that a second time, I guess. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Thank you for the voicemail. Thank all of you for coming tonight. You were very articulate in expressing yourselves, and thank you for coming. All right, we will now move to Section F, the Finance Report. Dr. Edwards.
Certainly, and I'm going to bring on Ms. Kapazi to go over the January 2023 Revenue Expenditure and Health Insurance Summary.
Okay, so the first thing you'll see that's different is that rather than there being a picture that may or may not be sized correctly, there is an attachment instead that says Monthly Board Report. We'll be adding that as an attachment instead of attempting to put it directly into the agenda going forward just because of formatting issues. This just makes it easier, and it's always going to be the same size. But you can see our adopted budget for this year, one hundred and six point three million. The prior year encumbrance, the return of fund balance, as discussed before, it has been approved by city council. However, we will not see that in our fund balance because that is going to our capital expenditure budget that stays at the six. So our adjusted budget will remain at the one hundred and seven point nine million dollars. Revenue and expenditure summary, year-over-year, January of '22, January of '21. You can see that our expenditures... Our expenditures, including encumbrances, are a little bit higher this year. We have put into place a spending freeze. So this will probably show a significant difference. That spending freeze kicked in, the first one here, just last Friday. So you'll see a significant difference come March. Health insurance reserve over at the city stays the same. The health insurance summary from December to January, both in '22, '22 to '23, and then the previous year's '21 to '22. Remember, that is for the year. It is just the receipts and the claims. It is not any additional monies that have, you know, were put into the budget. At the bottom in the green, in the comparison of '21-'22 school year to '22-'23 school year, that is where you see the additional expenses that were added on top of those receipts and claims. Is there any question about those?
The percentage that's in the bottom right corner of the green part?
Yes.
What is that, the percentage of?
That's the comparison of last year to this year. So if you see last year at this time, we were at a deficit of 1.3 million, and this year at this time, we are at 1.3 million in the black. That's because we put in the additional funds.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we're going to talk a little bit more about health, healthcare, health insurance when we get down to the actual budget as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kapazi, for that. And you all see, the format has been stated, and I think we're moving continuously in the right direction. Under Section G for our consent agenda tonight, board members, you see five items: the approval of the minutes from February the 7th, 2023, school board meeting, the approval of the minutes from the February 21st, 2023, school board work session, the religious exemption with the appropriate documents provided. And then we have our Human Resources Board Report and the Human Resources Report Addendum. And so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
A move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan. We will approve the consent agenda. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Mr. Trost?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. And Dr. Edwards, nothing further to be said about human resources tonight, correct?
Correct.
All right, we're going to move into Section H, our School Board Member Reports. And as we've done in the past, I'll go through each. If you have something that you need to share, you can. If not, we'll pass. We'll start with our very capable Finance and Facilities Committee Chair, Dr. Senha.
Well, at our last Finance and Facilities meeting, we discussed some of the budget issues. We're pretty well settled on where we are with the salary requests for the upcoming year. The real issue we discovered, discussed in depth, was funding, adequately funding our health benefits, medical benefits. And so, and I apologize that we didn't prepare you well for the discussion at the work session last time when we went over the budget. I wasn't expecting it to go that way, and I should have. So, but we are going to go over it in detail this evening so that you can see what the realities are, what we're up against, and what we're trying to do in a way that is least burdensome to our teachers and staff. And we have a meeting then coming up next week on the 14th.
Very good, and that'll be in advance of the work session?
Correct.
Well, it's a lot of work with that group. So any questions for the chair at this point?
Oh, and one other thing. Because of my, I chair this committee, I'm included in our VSBA training for fiscal governance. And we attended our first training today, the first of four, and happy to be included in those discussions with some of our top staff here.
Thank you, Dr. Senha, and we're very proud to know that we are part of that, Dr. Edwards, in Charlottesville. And so that's just another wonderful way where professional development, training, and all of those things are happening as we do what is best ultimately for the children of Lynchburg City Schools. Thank you. Governor's School Committee, Dr. Gupta is not here tonight. He did not give me anything in particular to say on that matter. So we will move on to the Law Regional School Committee, Dr. Carter.
Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, May the 3rd, at 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Likewise, with the STEM Academy.
In the STEM Academy, the next board meeting is March the 21st, Tuesday, at 11 o'clock.
Likewise, with the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee.
The Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, we met in March, no, February, to talk about the legislative breakfast, to look at what things we want to do next year and how we want to plan for that, and our topics and different things. And we'll do more of that during the, when we get together during our workshops to talk more about that. And also, we made sure that the Finance Committee could meet in April since the budget is ongoing, and we will meet sometime after that.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Any questions for her as the capable chair of the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee? And we've been doing a lot of that, and I want each board member to let you know we thank you for your time that you spend in this matter, and thank you for the committee and how well you all are organized. Thank you so much. All right, Partners in Education, Dr. Senha.
Well, unfortunately, I was unable to attend the last meeting, which I believe was last week. And Mrs. Preston isn't here to speak to that meeting, so I apologize. I don't have a report.
That's okay. We'll get it. Partners in Education is moving right along, and we're thankful for that. The Education Foundation, Mr. Trost and Dr. Senha.
We haven't had a meeting. We meet quarterly with them, but they sponsor our breakfast with the superintendent, which is upcoming, and is expected to be very high attendance, and so we're all looking forward to that.
Excellent. Very good. All right, and then Beacon of Hope, Mr. Andrews.
Beacon of Hope had their Hope X Talk this past Friday at the academy. It was a lot of people. I don't know the numbers and attendance, but it's a lot of good feedback on Facebook, obviously. A lot of people attended, so I'm looking forward to next year's. But yeah, and that's the only thing I have to report back.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, and thank you for being on that group. And I do want to say thank you to Dr. Brennan and to Dr. Terry Brennan for the wonderful way in which you all extended your appreciation and gratitude for the work of the Beacon of Hope. And I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything on that. Dr. Edwards, if you want to say anything?
Yeah, it was a fabulous event and a great way to showcase LCS graduate talent. And by graduate, I mean recent. These were young twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two-year-olds who are just phenomenal and impressive in the work that they're doing, which is a testament to our partnership with Be- work that they're doing, which is a testament to our partnership with Beacon of Hope and the work that our schools do in preparing our kids for the real world. So grateful for that partnership, and also want to thank the Brennans for their generosity in getting us some great seats for the event.
They did have great seats. Yeah, that was really excellent. So thanks, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Andrews, for that. All right, we're going to move to Section I with the Comprehensive Strategic Plan, which we do have. I want the public to know we have one, and we also try to align everything to push us forward. So the Facilities Master Plan is huge in that regard. Dr. Edwards for Dr. Waterka.
Yes, but before we get to the Facilities Master Plan, just about our strategic plan, our strategic plan ends in '24. So after we get through the budget season, we're going to jump right into planning for the next strategic plan, so that when we get to May, June of '24, we're ready to move into the next five-year cycle. So it's going to be a lot of work on the part of this board. We'll have some discussions about how we want to organize the work as a team. But the strategic plan, as you know, all of our budget items are lined up to our strategic plan. Our agenda items are lined up to our strategic plan. The work that we do lined up to our strategic plan. So it's very critical that once we finish with the facility study, the work that MGT is doing, that we take a real deep dive for what the next five years look like. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Waterka to talk a little bit about where we are with the Facilities Master Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
So two things that I'll discuss tonight is just some updates on where we are with the MGT Facilities Master Plan Study, as well as you have an update on where the CIP plan rests right now, just so you are aware of that. So first of all, on the Facilities Master Plan, if you recall, the scope of work and the schedule that we discussed in the last couple of meetings, our first component of that was our environmental scan, which is where we take a look at all the massive amounts of data that we provided to the consultant. They're making very, very good progress on that, looking at demographics and outcomes and how we do lesson planning and all sorts of other things. And they're starting to talk to some of our directors and other folks that are critically involved in some of the key things we do. And so that is ongoing right now. They're also looking at, making good progress on the benchmarking for other districts in Virginia that are similar to us, other cities in Virginia. The next step is for them to do their first initial visit, which will be on April 3rd, or the week of April 3rd. And so that will be when they will come visit our school buildings that we have. Hopefully, if you are available, they'll have time to meet with each one of you, as well as other key community stakeholders. If you're available that week. If you're not available, we can also set up a time to meet with them on Zoom or whatever, or phone call, or whatever may work for you. So that week, and then the week of May 8th is when they'll be back to do the engagement in the community from the information they received from you and other community stakeholders. We will craft a conversation around the educational opportunities that we have for our students in the division. On that week of May 8th, we'll do several community engagement opportunities, as well as doing some virtual events and opportunities for information collecting from them. So once all that information is done, then we'll have, they'll be developing at least three scenarios for the future of the facilities, and then presenting that to the school division hopefully sometime in mid, early to mid-June. One concern, of course, with that is that, of course, we'll be out of school, and we'll want to make sure we can engage with families on those questions as we move forward. So we're working through how that engagement, the second sort of engagement process will continue to work. So that's where we are on that process as well. Happy to take any questions on that particular component?
Any questions for Dr. Waterka? And I hope we all can appreciate the sensitivity, the process, and we are doing everything we can to make sure as much input is obtained as possible. Dr. Day?
I just wanted to ask you to repeat what you said was going to be happening in June.
So that, so part of the scope of work is that they'll get all the information, all the engagement, all the feedback, and they will then develop at least three scenarios, probably more, for, you know, renovate this school, move this program here, there, wherever. What we wanted to do is not provide the school board just one option, and here's what you have to take, right? We wanted to provide several options for the school board and City Council to consider as you deliberate among the ultimate results of what will become the Facilities Master Plan.
Well, is the result of that going to come to us in June? Is that what you said?
That's my
Okay, okay.
And then, and then from there, I envision sort of an engagement process on our end, supported by the consultant, to help the school board make a decision, or whichever direction you want to go.
Thank you.
So just making sure there's lots of voice, lots of opportunity.
Mr. Trost?
And just the April 3rd, we're going to be the whole week? I was checking my calendar to make sure I'm available, or specifically April 3rd is when you want us to meet?
No, sir, it'll be during the week sometimes, so we'll work to a scheduled time for you.
Thank you, Mr. Trost. Any questions for Dr. Waterka tonight on this very important matter? We're getting a sense of a timeline, and work is moving forward. And Dr. Waterka, we want to thank you for your leadership and disregard. All right. Thank you. We will now move.
Dr. Coleman?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I tend to do that, I'll slow down.
Just very, just very briefly, in your board docs, you have a list of the capital improvement plans that were requested versus what were actually included in the city manager's capital improvement plan that was submitted to the City Council last week. There were two questions that came up from board members that were very good, that I think merit conversation, and a lot of, the first one is about how the CIP process works and how that relates to what the school board adopts or reviews. Of course, we make requests to the city to include capital projects in the budget, just like every other city, all the city departments do as well. And obviously, the city manager has to find ways to balance his budget. So some of those things will make it in, some of them won't. You can see the ones that were not included. Now, what happened was ultimately, there was probably some of the next two years worth of projects oftentimes were included, and some of the ones that are sort of the out years were not included. I think that's because the, because of the Facilities Master Plan is sort of ongoing, and so looking out past that might, we might want to wait until that's done before we make some definite commitments on those projects. And so there's a couple items that were not included, I think, that are, at least on my mind, that I think we just need to talk with them about a little bit, and that is the athletics improvements, mechanical, electrical improvements, as well as the gym additions. I know those are things that are very important to the board, and I think that just, we just need to have a conversation about where that's going to go. The other question was about the debt capacity for future projects. You'll see that we requested specific projects, and they, instead of naming specific projects, what the manager did was, so let's take the amount of money that we would have spent on that essentially, and put it into a sort of a generic placeholder for what we call debt capacity. And what that means is that there's only so much money that the city can borrow over time for both statutory and sort of practical purposes. So essentially, what this does is it sets aside some of that money for future school projects. And so what's actually used down the road, we'll see, but it is good that we have that placeholder set aside for the school division. So I'm happy to take any questions on that, and we'll see where we go as we move forward.
Questions on this portion of Dr. Waterka's presentation? Yeah, there's some things on there that we need to have continued talks about, but we will have those talks here. All right, thank you. I believe that concludes that section of our agenda for item, I mean, Section I. We're going to now move to J. If, I would like us to do J1, and then I'm going to look around the horseshoe after we finish J1, and if I can tell that somebody would like to take a break before we dive into J2, I'll do that. If not, we'll keep pressing. All right, J1 is going to be an item for action tonight. We've had an opportunity to look at the LCS calendar draft, and I think in our previous meeting that there was some thought about some of the earlier questions, and there may be others, I don't know, but Dr. Edwards?
Sure. So the calendar is up for approval tonight. There was a calendar committee that met for several months prior to bringing the calendar for an intro, and then a first read and a second read. Some of the questions that were asked during the first read was, can we take days from the winter break and use them to make a later start date in August? And the calendar committee did do a survey prior to putting together the calendar, and from that survey, 60% of parents, 82% of students, and 90% of staff rated the key full two weeks, 10 days in the December, as a very high importance with a level five. So I think that was the only thing that had that level of a high rating, which is why they did not touch the two weeks in December. The other thing was about a later start date in August, and that received mixed results with about, I think, 30% of the parents and 22% of the students, and 18% of the staff felt like that that was of high importance. And remember, the calendar committee was charged with looking at a start date, but also trying to get us, get in the calendar in early June with graduation being on the 2nd, and the last day for staff being on the 3rd of June. The last question was about the PD day, that is, the day after MLK on June, I'm sorry, January 16th, and whether or not that day, that Professional Development Day, would be better placed in either February or March, because it's a long, long road to April where the spring break was. And the committee did wrestle with that, and one of the reasons why the Professional Development Days are located throughout the school year where they are is they're located at the end of the marking periods, where teachers wanted a teacher work day at the end of the marking period. The other thing that came up is, while, yes, it's a very long stretch from January to March, and this year probably isn't a good year to use, but often that's when we would have delayed openings or snow days or emergency days that we may have off. But they felt like the discussion that they had regarding the PD days and not trying to add more days during the school year off for students, because each day off for a student has to be added to the beginning or the end of the calendar with that. So just wanted to share that feedback from the calendar committee.
All right, you all have had a chance to look at it. I think that Dr. Edwards has tried to give us reasons for some of the questions that were raised as to why the calendar has been adjusted and/or remained the same. Hearing that, is there a motion to approve the calendar 23-24? Dr. Brennan?
I'd just like to thank the administration and the committee for looking at those aspects, particularly, once again, looking at the questions that have come up about the discussion. So in light of that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar for the 23-24 academic year.
Second.
Moved and properly, the second, and any further questions? I do have not a question, but Dr. Edwards, what you just said tonight, I guess meetings become one way that people can understand, but just making sure persons understand that that's some fine information you gave to explain why you kept the block in December, why this, why that. Just making sure people understand that they are being heard, things are being shared, and we're trying to do what's best for students and staff in this calendar. So any further statements to be made? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll for the approval of the calendar for 23-24.
School board member, Mr. Trost?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senhai?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
All right, I'm taking my little look around the table to y'all. I see one head nodding. So we're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will come right back and jump into J2.
Thank you.
Everybody, you've heard Dr. Senha earlier mentioned that we would be getting to this point in our meeting tonight. And so I'm thankful to Dr. Edwards, Dr. Waterco, and Mrs. Kapazi for all that you're doing as we take another dive into the FY24 proposed operating budget component. And so, Dr. Edwards, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. So for the public, what we've done is try to keep a little historical record of everything we've been discussing regarding the budget. And you can see those links to previous meetings in our board agenda. But we want to sort of pick up with two items tonight. One of them is the draft fifteen-fifty salary proposal pay tables. And we are so grateful to our staff and just this level of transparency that we have where we put out every pay table and tell folks to look at it, try to find yourself and see where you're going. And we did a good job, but it wasn't perfect. So we did have to make some corrections that were brought to our attention on the admin pay scales where we were trying to combine some pay scales, but we redid those admin pay scales so you can more clearly see if you were on, you know, pay scale G two sixty where you're going, if you're on F two sixty where you would be going for the next year. So that section has been revised. That is what is in the board docs, and I've dated it for March second. So if you have the old, and this is for people who are listening as well as at home, the only changes are made in the admin pay tables, not in the classify or in the teacher pay table. So the fifteen dollars an hour proposal is still in there. The fifty thousand dollar starting salary for teachers are still in there, but we added more clarity to the admin pay scale. And that was under the advisement of some of the administrators who were looking at it and had some questions, as well as when we met with our Personnel Advisory Committee, they had some questions. And we were happy to make those changes. So just take a look at that. But the big part we wanted to talk about tonight is, as Dr. Senha spoke earlier, the Finance Committee did meet a couple weeks ago to talk about health insurance. We brought it up last time, but we felt like we could do a better job of kind of having that discussion. And that's one of the things I love about this board. You are the lead learners. And if this were a classroom and we didn't get it right the first time, what we do, reteach, revisit, and make sure that we check for understanding and do the right thing. So that's what we're going to do here. We're going to kind of reteach, revisit. And great classrooms use, you know, if kids didn't get it the first time, then if I'm the teacher, I'm going to use different materials, a different process, because my end game is to make sure that people understand. So we brought some different materials to this meeting to kind of help our school board and our public follow along. And I'm going to take you through those materials, as well as we'll entertain some questions as we move forward. And I will say, we tried to do this from the lens of those of you who like charts and numbers and Excel spreadsheets, there's something there in you. Those of you who like bar graphs, there's lots of bar graphs for you. And then those of you who just like scenarios, what does this mean for the average person? There's something in there for you, too. So we have multiple ways to try to go over where we are with our health insurance premiums and funding of that. So I am going to start with a document that says, if you are looking online or in board docs, Health Insurance Notes, and the date is zero-three-zero-seven-two-thousand-and-twenty-three-V-two, which is version two.
Very good.
That document. So if we could open that document, and you can follow along at home with me. It starts with two bar graphs. So that first bar graph, which I'm calling Figure One, represents the historical, and I'll say historical because COVID sort of blew it up for us, so we had to go back in time and kind of look at the this-is-what-we-are-supposed-to-be-doing chart. So when we look at how do we account for the premium for our health insurance plans, which we have those five plans listed, you have employee-only, employee-spouse, employee-and-one-child, employee-children, and then, of course, the employee as part of the family plan. We do have fourteen staff members that are grandfathered into a previous healthcare plan that existed before me. And once those fourteen staff members retire or leave LCS, that plan goes along with them. So, but they are grandfathered into that plan. But I'm not going to talk about that tonight. I want to talk about just our active employees. So for our employee-only plan, so any employee who just takes health benefits, just for myself, the school board pays a little over ninety-five percent of that premium, and the employee pays just under five percent of that premium. When you look at employee-spouse, employee-child, and employee-children, you can see that the school board pays anywhere from a little over sixty-six to sixty-seven percent of the premium, and the employee pays the remaining thirty-two, thirty-three. And then, of course, the family plan, the school board pays about fifty-six percent, and the employee pays almost forty-four percent. That is our historical percentage that we have been paying prior to going into COVID and seeing the increases. Now, what has happened is, the last two years, particularly as premiums have risen, we moved away from this historical sort of allotment or cost-sharing model. And we did it for good reasons. The board wanted to not pass on any additional costs to the employees. So what we did two years ago is this board decided, let's add a little bit more money in another pot that we can add to health insurance. That was the five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that you said in FY22. And then we went through FY22, and claims went up some more, as well as the premiums went up some more. And then we said, okay, let's up it a little more and add another eight-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars to do that. And that brings us to where we are right now, where the price for the premium is about fifteen percent higher than what it was that we were paying, which is what's listed on our website. But I wanted this board to have some historical information about, well, how were we paying the premiums up until this point where we got into the business of adding this extra money for good reasons? And that's that. Then I also thought, what, well, not just me, but my team, thought, well, what does the city do? So that second graph is the city's distribution of the plan. And you could see, we are similar on the employee-only side, and the city actually pays sixty-eight percent of the premium for employee-spouse, employee-child, employee-children, and employee-family, and the employee pays thirty-two percent. So they have a little bit more consistency across the remaining four options than we do. We're pretty close, with the exception of family. So you have visually two options. So clearly, from a cost savings perspective, for our employees taking the employee-only plan, if that's something that you can do, you would pay about five percent of that premium. So that is page one. Okay. If we go to page two, and you're like me, you're probably like, how many people are on each plan, Dr. Edwards? What does this look like when we look at LCS active employees? So if we look at LCS active employees, this is not Cobra and not our retirees. This is just the active employees who are taking health insurance at all. We do have some employees that don't take it at all. They may get it from a different, from their spouse's job. But of the twelve-hundred-and-thirty-four individuals who take insurance, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two of them take the employee-only plan. So you can see, the bulk of our staff who participate in our health insurance participate on the employee-only plan. And then we broke down the percentages in a pie chart for all the other plans, which are about seven percent for employee-spouse, seven employee-child, nine, and thirteen for employee-children, employee-family. And then there are those fourteen individuals that are in that grandfather plan as well. Okay. Figure four can be found on our website. That is what is posted, or was posted at the beginning of 2022, for what the employee actually pays towards that plan, assuming that there are twenty-four deductions. So for most of us, we get paid twice a month for twelve months. So that's the twenty-four deductions. And you can see that the monthly contribution, so that is the total for two pays, on the employee-only is about thirty dollars and eighty cents. That is the current, what we're collecting from them. And if you go down that column, you can see what the monthly contribution on the employee side and the employer side. So all of this on page one and two is to set the stage for somewhat factual information so that we are all at least understanding where we stand. Now, the interesting part about figure four on the bottom of page two is when you actually look at those monthly costs, which I'll take the one that's employee-only, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and thirteen cents per month, those aren't the actual costs. And I suspect that those were the costs that we thought they were going to be early on when we posted this at the time that we put this together. But the actual costs are a little bit higher, which is on Ms. Kapazi's sheet when you look at the actual cost for the premium.
So are you saying those were sort of anticipated costs and projected costs at some point in the past?
I believe so, that they were. But we've got plans so that we can update this and keep it pretty accurate going forward. Questions? Dr. Brennan? Okay, okay. I'll keep going. Okay. So now, we're on page three of our document, and we're looking at some historical health insurance information for the last five years or since 2018, nineteen. And then some of it is projected, so I'll point that out. Total premiums collected from the multiple groups, so that's the employer, that would be the board, the active employee, and then, of course, we collect premiums from retirees and people who elect Cobra if they choose to do. So that column is the total premium that is collected. And if you look at the current year, it's projected. And the reason why it's projected is because we haven't finished the current school year, all right? And then, just for fun, because I am a former math supervisor, I put, let's say, we took that projected amount, and that's what we did next year, even though I am not recommending that, that's why it says not recommended. But just for comparison, so I would have a number, I took that same twelve million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and put it in that column. And then you have historical data on total claims paid. And if you look at 2018, nineteen, as Ms. Kapazi says, we were in the black because we were, you know, our claims were less than what we collected, which actually impacted some decisions we made at that point because we were like, hey, this isn't so bad. We're doing pretty well. And then the next year, not so well, but still close. So you can see up until 2021, the actual claims that were paid. And then you'll get back to the current year, and that's a projection that we think that's the claims. Now, that last column is the difference between those two numbers. So I've talked about premiums collected, I've talked about claims paid. Nowhere in that conversation did I talk about the extra money that the school board added in FY22 or FY23. So that's the piece that if you go, well, wait a second, what happened to that money, Dr. Edwards? That's the next column or the next section. You can see in FY22, this board approved five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars of, hey, add this money and help out with the health insurance. And then the following year, we upped it to eight-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars for a total of one-point-three-million dollars to help with the health insurance. And remember, the board did this for those two years because that board, this board was committed to not pass any cost on to the employees. That's why we made those decisions. So what I did was redo the same chart and now say, well, if you add all the premiums we collected and you add the extra money that we decided to fund, so there's that five-twenty-five, the five-twenty-five, and the eight-fifteen, what does it look like now? And that's why, if you look at 22, 23, the current year, if all stays well, that would explain why Ms. Kapazi has been saying that we may be projected to be in the black. But that's due to that extra money. But even if we did that next year, you'll see, there's still a deficit of about six-hundred-and-thirty-four. So some of you last time were like, where does the seven-hundred-thousand dollars come from? That's where the seven-hundred-thousand dollars came from. So in Dr. Edwards' head, if this board decides, Dr. Edwards, we just want to continue doing what we have done for the last two years, which is, we're going to figure out whatever extra money we need to cover, the costs that we need to cover, how much would that be? It's projected to be about six-hundred-and-thirty-four, which we rounded up to seven-hundred-thousand dollars. So I'm going to pause. Take some questions, because Dr. Day looks like he has a question?
Okay, go right ahead.
Twelve ninety-seven.
So going back to the top of this page, and your chart, you're showing, for fiscal year 2022, the column where it's difference shows a shortfall of one-point-four million dollars, right?
Okay.
All right. And the board approved the employer addition for that year of five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand.
Yep.
Well, that doesn't cover the one-point-four million. So where did the difference come from?
So if you go down to the third chart, well, you'll see it's about eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars short.
Uh huh.
Okay. So here's part two of that conversation. What happens when I think I'm going to hire ten extra bus drivers, five extra teachers, and an administrator that doesn't show up for six months, and I budgeted the family plan for them? There's money that sat in benefits that I could use.
Okay. So you can move that over to cover.
Yeah. But we wouldn't do that until the end of the year, which is why it trends negative for a very long time.
Okay. And then a second question. The board-approved employer addition for fiscal year 2022 was the five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and then board-approved employer addition for fiscal year 23 was eight-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. And then, so that, is that on top of the five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it was an addition
Right.
to the addition?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Day.
Okay.
Any other questions so far? And she will continue the presentation.
I will continue. So we are now on page four. So some recommendations for the school board to consider. So these are the things that we discussed in Finance Committee, which the full board did not have the benefit of having that meaty conversation, which is why we're back at, let's have this meaty conversation here. So one of the things that we noticed was that the retirees and those who are electing Cobra, who are not our employees, perhaps gone to a different division, should have been paying one-hundred percent of their premiums, but had not been paying one-hundred percent of their premiums. And in this first option, even if we decide we still want to take that approach with our active employees, this includes a recommendation to have the retirees and the Cobra people pay the premium. So if the premium goes up, it goes up for retirees and those electing Cobra. But it would keep, this option one would say, this school board's going to keep those same flat-dollar amounts for the employee. They won't be the same for us employers because somebody's got to pay the difference. And I put that chart back there so you wouldn't have to keep going back and forth and back and forth. That's the first option. The administration is not recommending that option, but we felt like, because this has been a practice that we have done for the past two years, you need to see what that would look like. On the previous page, you have what that might look like in terms of money. Option two says-
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you say that the retirees of Cobra should have been paying one-hundred percent, is that, why should they have been paying? Was that, is that part of-
They were. So they were paying one-hundred percent. But then, when the premiums went up, we did not charge them additional.
Okay. So they were paying one-hundred percent until the last two years, or-
Historically, that's where they were.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. So if we use option one, we're, in a sense, saying what we said the last two years, that we're going to figure out a way to add more money to an additional pot of health insurance helper pot so that we can keep these flat-dollar amounts for our active employees. That's what option one is. And the only way to do that is, we're projecting, we need about seven-hundred-thousand dollars to add to the five-hundred-and-twenty-five and the eight-hundred-and-fifteen. And that will be a recurring thing that we would have to do if we stay in that area. So that's the first option that we wanted to present because we did hear conversations last time that said, some board members felt like they did not want to see the cost-sharing premiums go up for the employees. Okay. So that's option one. Option two on page four says, well, what if we go back to that original cost-sharing percentages for each of the groups that LCS has historically done? So it really doesn't change employee-only because that's at the ninety-five-four, but it's getting us back- us back to 67.32 and all of those percentages. So what that is saying is LCS is committed to this cost-sharing model, percentage-wise, but if insurance goes up $5, then I, the employer, would pay 95% of the $5, and Dr. Coleman, as the employee, would pay 5% of that $5. So we would share in that cost-saving model if the premiums went up a little bit.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding you. You're saying in option two, the percentages stay the same, but the absolute dollar amounts will go up to match what is required to meet the premiums?
Correct. And let me also say that I do believe we're going out for an RFP in July to look at health insurance. So on the off chance, the wonderful chance, we get something that has more favorable premiums using that same cost-sharing-
Which is something that Dr. Brennan had wanted us specifically to do.
Correct, and we're gonna, that is going to occur in July when we do that. Okay. And then this will, sticking with a cost-benefit model like we had, is a little bit more predictable in terms of us when we know, like, if health insurance is going up 50 bucks, we can predict what that means for us, we can predict what that means for the employer, and we don't have to add the $700,000.
But would we keep the $525,000 and the two amounts from before?
Yeah, so what we would do with that money, since it's in the line, is because if the premium goes up, the employer's share goes up as well. So what we owe goes up, so we would use that money to cover our employee share, employer share of that increase going forward.
So we're not talking about eliminating those supplemental amounts that were approved in fiscal year '22?
We're just talking, stop the practice of keep adding.
We leave them there, but we're not going to continue to escalate them.
Yeah, we're going to need some money to, if the benefits go up, you know, 15%, we have to pay an additional amount for it.
And so we're gonna leave those things there to cover that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, sir. Okay. And then option three on the page five looks like option two, except we just said, what would it look like if we did the same thing the city does? And we use their cost-benefit sharing model, and that's what option three would do. We still would not need to add an additional $700,000, but we would use this benefit model. And then I'm going to show you why we did what we did and where it's beneficial for some of our employees to look at the different models. So, but before I get to the scenarios, I just want to take a pause and see if we're still good on that.
So the option three gets us to the 32% that the city does.
The city does.
And it would be no need to do an option to compare what the other school divisions do, because we're doing better than they with health insurance.
Correct, so, yes, yes, but we're still going to go out for the RFP to look at.
And it will also be better for the employee family with the option.
Yes. The city's cost-sharing plan is more favorable to families, people taking the family option than our current plan is. The others are comparable.
Just kidding.
Okay, so I live in the world of, what does that mean for me, Dr. Edwards? So I went to the, what does that mean for me, Dr. Edwards? So on page six, I went in and found one of our Title I Instructional Assistance One, which is on our lowest pay scale, and I made these names up, but I'm a Good Helper is the employee. So this instructional assistant currently makes $13.11 an hour, and proposed next year is the $15 an hour. They work six hours a day, 190 days, and you can see the difference in their salary, right? The difference between 14, 945, and 17, 100 would be that increase if the 15 were fully funded, and that's pretty good. That increase is about $2,154. And then, of course, the conversation is, you gave me a raise, but now you want me to pay more in health insurance. So this particular person, if they were just on the employee-only plan, the addition that they would have to pay is $58.44, which would make their increase $2,096. So the overall percentage would be about a 14% raise from last year to this year, even with I'm paying a little bit more for my health insurance. And that's if they did the employee-only plan. So that's the most beneficial plan in terms of the least amount of costs to the employee.
This is under options two and three?
Right, because the employee-only plan is the same.
Right, so it wouldn't be a change, right.
Correct. Now, what if I'm that person? I'm still a good helper, right? I'm a good helper, I'm still an instructional assistant, but now I have a family. So same salary, right? Same increase, same 14, 945, same 17, 100. Next year, same 21, 54, 60 would be my increase. But the difference in the family plan, the family plan is the most expensive plan that we have. You can see that that is 957 for the whole year. So what does that mean for my raise? My raise would be $1,197, so I would be getting an 8% raise if I took the family plan. So part of our goal was just really to make sure that our folks, we weren't giving them a raise, and then they end up with a deficit and having less money as a result. So they would have an 8% raise. And this is if we go with the LCS model that says the family plan, the employee pays about 43% of that. So that would be option two. Questions?
Questions?
Dr. Carter has.
Dr. Carter, go right ahead.
Okay, so Dr. Edwards, you're saying that the annual family plan increase, so the increase would be the 957, okay.
And I think that's how my employers would look at it. They would say, what are you giving me as a raise, and what are you taking out of that pot? And that's why we did it sort of this way, so that they can see what that additional cost for the increase would be.
Okay.
Okay. And then I did-
I have a question.
Go ahead, sorry.
On the, that scenario, we're dealing with the family plan, family plan takers or insurance of 168, that's the population as it currently exists. How many of those 168 are going to be impacted as drastically as this I'm a Good Helper scenario would be?
I would have to go back and actually look at-
You follow my logic?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I absolutely do.
And I'm assuming, but I don't know, it's a very small sample size, so I think, hopefully there, I mean, it'd be wonderful if people are getting full health benefits for the family, but that's a tough road that they've picked if they're making $15 an hour to support the whole family, which happens, I understand that.
Wait, Dr. Carter.
Let's, can you go back? I'm not getting this. So the increase-
Mm-hmm.
Will be more. More, okay. So for the individual, they will only have to pay an increase of $58.44 per year?
Yeah, they're only paying 5% of the premium if the premium goes up about $5, and over the course of the year, 5% of $5 is minimum.
Okay, so that would be the increase. So instead, now they're, so what's the actual amount they're paying? Do we know versus the increase?
Yes, on Ms. Kapazi's sheets, for those of you who like the charts, the actual cost for the, whoops, which one is it? Here it is. The actual cost for the employee-only plan, where is-
Thirty-something, right? Was?
Yes, 35.67 is the monthly total that they would be paying for that.
And it's going to go up to what?
That is where it's going. Right now, it's $30.80. It would go up to $35.67.
Oh, okay.
So that difference.
And what's the family, employee-family plan?
The employee-family plan is, hold on here, wait, family. Family, the new monthly payment for next year would be 584.67 per month, which is an increase per paycheck of 39.89. So what, we have these charts too that break down that increase per paycheck each year. Okay. So the other thing that we did was, what happens if we do, if we took the city's version of cost-sharing?
Option three.
Which is option three. Remember, the city, the employee-only plan is exactly like ours, so that didn't change. So that top scenario didn't change, but the bottom scenario does change, because that would reduce, right now, our family, our employees that take the family plan pay more than those counterparts at the city level. So that would actually reduce the cost, and you can see for those individuals, that same, I'm a helper, same instructional assistant, the amount that they would have to contribute to their family plan would go down by $930, which would make their increase 20%, right? So that's how we-
They'd be pretty happy with that, that's it.
Yeah, I'm thinking if there's polling and voting right now, it might be out there. But we also wanted to just do it, because, you know, we don't always want to look at, you know, just the, an instructional assistant. So the next page is the same information, except I took a bus driver that is in, I believe, nope, this is starting, this is still starting salary for a bus driver. So the current starting salary is $14.85, the proposed starting salary next year for a bus driver is $16.74. And again, you can see the differences in the percent increase. So employee-only, 12.37%. If you took the employee-family plan on our cost-sharing, it's 6.92% of a salary increase, and then, of course, up to 18% if we did the city savings. And then the last one I did, because we have a lot of folks who are teachers, so I think I took the teacher one, and this actually might be a fifth-year teacher, not a first-year teacher, just to mix it up a little bit to see. And you can see the differences in those same three scenarios. The good news about all of this, and whether we're, you know, sitting at a 5% increase right now, is all of these scenarios are above a 5% increase, right? We're still waiting on the rest, on the House and Senate budget, but based on the governor's budget. Okay, so I'm going to take a pause and take questions and comments and ask my team to jump in and share any additional stuff.
And ultimately, at the end of the day, what I'm going to know is what direction do you need for us tonight as we prepare for the facility and finance meeting on the 14th, and then ultimately, the work session on the 21st, where I think we might be trying to move towards some action.
Correct. So we had to give a, sort of a placeholder, where are you right now, figure to the city, so that they can start doing their budget. And remember, we gave them the scenario B, which, I don't find my chart here, we had these charts from way back when. We gave them the scenario that we thought, okay, they're going to work out the grocery tax issue, but it includes the $700,000. So we erred on the side of, it sounds very favorable that the work that's being done on the grocery tax is going to help us, but we weren't sure about health insurance. So what the city has currently across the street for planning purposes for us includes $700,000 extra in health insurance, because we weren't sure which way this board would go, and we didn't want to be rushed in a decision, so we went on the higher end, knowing we could, we could back it down as well. But ultimately, yes, this board will have to say, Dr. Edwards, keep the 700, go with a different option or wherever the board lands.
Any questions, Dr. Carter?
I just want to add that we need to address or put in here also to start looking at and really pursuing the other boards that we, that they, they have that pass-through monies to start paying for their portions.
Oh, you're talking about the-
Oh.
I didn't find out some information about that. So what we were formally referring to as the non-LCS entities, which are employees that work at STEM Academy, GovSchool, Laurel, Steps with Links, and I always forget one, but there's, I think it's five of them. Part of the discussion, for those of you who were here last time we visited this conversation, and what happened that made us sort of stop in our tracks? Those 44 people were added in with our total active employees, and I'm not sure how insurance works, but the more people you have, somehow your pool is a little bit bigger and you get a little bit more favorable rates. And one of the things was, if we take those 44 people out, or those 44 individuals who were selecting insurance, how might that affect the pool that we were in? And at that time, there was a little bit of discussion, and then we just aborted it right then and there. But I did want to bring that back up, that those 44 people are included in our totals when we do those things, so.
Dr. Carter?
And can we look at that? When we, you said, we're going to look at this insurance process. We can ask that question then of the agent to see how that factors in?
Or if we took the, if we took the 44, the non-LCS employees out?
Out.
When you, I'm not sure, I don't want to lie and say something, but if we go out for an RFP, would that include them, or would we have to?
I think that would be a larger conversation, taking Laurel as an example. In their rental agreement, it says they will pay us this in rent, and we will, in turn, do this, that, and the other, and one of those being that they will be on our health insurance. So however, in options two and three, it brings everyone up. Where we've been paying the excess ourselves, it brings everyone up, so that they also then are, you know, covering that excess, if that makes sense.
Are you saying that that agreement obligates us to provide health insurance for a specified premium amount? That we can't change the premiums?
No, 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 it just says that that's one of the obligations, such as we'll do cleaning, we'll do IT in the building that they're renting from us.
So we'll manage their health insurance.
Yes, and payroll.
But it doesn't, it doesn't prohibit us from adjusting
No.
the premiums?
All right, Dr. Brennan?
I have a question, Dr. Edwards, and a comment. Do you, do you know, if we go back to recommendation of the school board, consider option one, option two, option three, what, what would each of those options add to or help us with our deficit for predictive of previous years? So how much money would we gain by the different options?
And I printed that too, because I answered the question, and I want to say the option, if we just do the retirees, it's somewhere about $100,000, just bringing up Cobra and retirees, which doesn't put a nice chunk in our, in our deficit. If we, if we go back to our original cost-sharing, the LCS, it's closer to $500,000, and if we use the city, it's closer to $300,000. That we would, that would be an increase from the employee side.
Which theoretically would sort of go towards that $700,000 they think would be the deficit, so either $100,000, $300,000, or $500,000 would help that deficit. So just as a comment, and as I said before, I'm an English major, so I'm not very good with these, but I love the pictures. So if we can go back to the picture on, on the page three, which is the nice tables that we have, and first of all, I also want to say that Dr. Edwards and her team has once again raised the bar as far as the amount of information that we have about this stuff. You know, each, each budget discussion, they always provide information to us that we've never seen before, meaning they give us more information that is helpful to do this as compared to previously. And I think this, this health insurance information is something that is raising the bar as far as how much information we're getting, which is so great, and thank you all very much, Dr. Edwards and your team, for doing that. So looking at this, another way to look at this is we look at that top box, which is historical health insurance information. When we look at total premiums collected for, and I know you all will comment this if this is not correct, but help me with this. If you look at '22-23 and '23, I'm sorry, '21-22 and '22-23, those are just including the premiums that were paid by the employer, by the active employees, but did not include the increase that we had gotten in the budget for the previous years.
Correct.
So when we asked for 5% increase in our budget in '21, and we got that, we got 10% or something in last year, those funds were not included in those premiums collected. As someone has said, they're kind of in a healthcare savings plan. They're in our savings account, but they were not applied. I think most have assumed they were applied. I mean, we kind of thought when we, when we asked for that, that we were increased, we used those funds to increase the amount that the employer, LCS, was paying, and, but instead of that, they were put into a separate account. So as Dr. Edwards has pointed out, if you go down to that next box, the bigger box at the bottom that says historical health insurance information with additional school board money, that is- that is those funds from the last two budgets. So when you look at twenty-one, twenty-two, you have that same amount of eleven million, that was what everybody paid, but then you now have five hundred and twenty-five, which was the money we thought was put in as far as revenue goes. So it now is, instead of eleven thousand, even, is now eleven thousand, five twenty-two. And then when you go to twenty-two, twenty-three, you now have our claims, plus you have that twenty-twenty-five from two years ago. Premium, right, coming for, you look at the premium, you have that five twenty-five, because it's carried forward, right, it was added to our budget. And then we have the eight fifteen, which was added to the budget last year. So therefore, Dr. David, to answer your question, they're gonna be carried forward, including in twenty-three, twenty-four, because they were what we asked to go towards the employee amount that we are paying. Is that fair so far, Dr. Edwards, is that okay? Yeah.
So that's just suggested over time, the sustainability would be in question without increasing the employee.
Exactly right. So it's sustainable, because it was included in the budget, and it goes year after year. So if you look at that box, and you look at twenty-two, twenty-three, and you look at twelve million, adding five twenty-five, adding eight fifteen, you now have thirteen million, thirteen point five million, compared to our twelve point nine million that we have for claims. So we actually fortunately have now a, 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 not a deficit, we now have an asset? Is that Dr. Edwards?
Surplus.
Surplus, surplus, all of that, of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, projected for the end of the year, as compared to the previous one, two, three years that we've had a deficit. And this is why, when we see on our, our, our sheets that we got this evening, that we have a one point three million surplus currently, as of year-to-date, which, which Dr. Edwards said, one ninety-eight percent, is because those funds are now put in there. So this year, we hopefully, if these numbers are correct, which I think are fair numbers, would have a surplus of five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And we have to then factor that into the seven hundred thousand dollars that we're trying to figure out how that fits in the budget. So one of the issues is sort of, you know, so that's, that's, I think, just trying to be helpful, that it was put in a separate account, but I think from here on, it's gonna be put in the real account, which is, is the, is the revenue coming in for claims, so that from now on, we'll have those numbers correctly. The numbers were there, they were just in the savings account and not in the real account. But to me, it kind of raises the question then, as to, if we have a five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar surplus at the end of the year, what comes of those funds for the next year?
So, any surplus, so let's just say we do have that. That becomes fund balance, which we already know, the conversation of fund balance goes back to the city for discussion as to how the city wants to use or give us back, or we can make a, depending upon what we do with the fund balance conversation.
Unless we decide to use it somewhere else before the end of the year.
Correct, correct. But other, any, any surplus that's unused is gonna go back to fund balance, unless it's already in a reserve account.
And Dr. Edwards, even though we're not discussing that right now, I do want the board to know that we are meeting with the council leadership Friday, and this matter will be on the agenda to prep for future discussions about the whole fund balance issue.
Yeah. So, Dr. Edwards, I just think you'll allow me to give the English majors' interpretation of this fund, because I think it's really, I think it's very complicated and very difficult, but it kind of, as is laid out, it, it makes very much sense, kind of trying to interpret it. With the pictures, I like the pictures.
Dr. Carter?
Colors are good. Thank you very much.
And I think that's why I have been hesitant to increase the premiums, because we do have a surplus sometimes, because we are, we have been very careful, and I don't consider it slush, I consider it being careful and being good stewards of the funds. And at the end of the year, we will have to take that back to council and say, here, and we have no surety that they're gonna say, you all have done great, instead it may be seeing you all at this slush, and send, give it back. And then we're gonna increase the premiums for our staff, and that's a hard pill to swallow for me.
Huge discussions, but we're gonna have the discussions, we're gonna do some good negotiating. Go ahead, Dr. Day.
So on that topic, would it be possible for us, if we did whatever we decide to do, but we end up at the end of a fiscal year with a positive balance, a surplus, more premiums taken in than claims paid out? Could we simply return that to the employees as an end-of-year bonus or something? As, and, and I'm, the point of doing that might be, if we were going to make some salary increases, we could at least say, if we're asking too much, we're gonna give it back to you. It might soothe people who are upset about premium increases if we decide to go with some premium increases. It's just a thought.
Interesting faces around the table.
You just need the legality of it.
I don't know. I think we get that, I believe it's, I know in my premium, I get a rebate every once in a while, because if it's over a state corporation commission, I think dictates it. I don't think it's an issue, and then that really protects us potentially against the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, which is concerning for me, that year. So that's kind of a, I think, I like the idea, it's a great idea.
Ma'am clerk, please so note it, we've done both of this before, but we need to check the legalities and the realities of it whenever that board has to deal with all of that. All right, now, anything else on this matter that we need, Ms. Capazzi?
I just want to add one thing regarding that, that, that surplus assumes that our claims are going to not exceed the projected amount that was projected the year prior. So for right now, twenty-two, twenty-three, we are on course to exceed that. So just, just so that you know.
Wait, so that, say this again, that projection, the twelve million, nine seventy-five, that projection was formulated when, based on?
A year ago.
So that doesn't take account of how things have transpired since then?
Correct.
Is there a way to get a more up-to-date projection?
Yes, and, but exactly, based on our current claims, we are projected to exceed that dollar amount.
By roughly how much, do you know?
I can't say that for certain right now, just, that's my inexperience.
More than five hundred thousand? Okay.
The other, and help me with this one, Ms. Capazzi. So when is health insurance shored up? So when, like, when calendar time, are we sure all the claims from the previous year have been paid?
It's on the calendar year, so December is the end of that calendar year, but as far as for us, because we're budgeting on a fiscal year, that's why we always have this.
Right, but if I have to do a return to fund, so, so let's say this is here, right? And I have to do a return to fund balance, but when will I know what the June thirtieth, everything I had to spend, because I can't say I'm giving it back until I clear up June thirtieth?
Good point.
Right, what you're saying is, we, we would have money encumbered, because claims haven't been reported back to us yet.
Right.
There's a lag between when a service is provided and the claim comes through.
And the rea, and the reason why I ask that, because would that impact, so if I'm trying to give a bonus at the end of this school year, but I have to wait until August or September to say how much of the health insurance is left, because we gotta pay June claims.
Right.
That, did I now put that money in fund balance? Or where I can't give a bonus, because now I gotta go back to the city and ask for that? Do you know what I'm saying? We have control up until June thirtieth.
And the thing is, I don't know when we get that bill.
Okay.
You deserve a projection, I guess.
Yeah, but that, that was a good question, Dr. Edwards. Maybe we ought to hold out loud, thinking, right now.
Is there a health insurance reserve?
Yes, that we can.
That could be used to cover the sort of, yeah, I mean, you're talking about your CD El Driva breaks her leg on June twenty-ninth, and the claim doesn't come in until who knows how much later. So which fiscal period does that claim come under? But if there's this health insurance reserve, maybe that would be enough to cover those kinds of, say, two-month discrepancy? I don't know, that might be a way to handle that issue, I don't know.
And we're all in uncharted territory, so I'm with Dr. Coleman, I don't like to speak out loud what I don't know, so. I, I think we need to do some research.
Okay.
Okay, so, Dr. Edwards, before we move on, I just want to make clear, I agree with Dr. Brennan. It, it's amazing, every group prior to us did a great job, and so I want to make sure I'm clear. But this is just incredible, the amount of information, how it's broken down. So board members, any other questions relative to this matter? We're heading towards March the fourteenth, then we're gonna come back on the twenty-first and see what happens, all right? Questions, talk to the, go ahead, Dr. Edwards.
So just so that we're very clear about what the process is. So on the twenty-first, we have a public hearing, and we once again share information with the public. These are the priorities, this is where we are in, engaging questions. But at that point, we are presenting, when we get to the work session, we're presenting a budget for you to approve. And if you remember, if you've been on the board before, it's the sheets that we have to send over to the city that outline all the revenue, all the expenditures, and the grants, if I'm not mistaken, on one document. So if you're making a decision on the twenty-first of what to do, whether or not we're doing seven hundred or not, but we also have to have a budget that has to be approved on the twenty-first. So either you're defaulting, saying the finance committee could make that decision and give us that direction, so we come back with, this is what it looks like.
Hold the phone on that, then keep talking. I'm just one board, board member. I kind of like the idea, we've got a finance committee, and they vet it out, and the chair's rejected, and that's fine, and then they could bring back a recommendation.
I think that's a whole board thing.
So, it, it, well, you all enjoy these links and meetings, and that's all right, keep right on with it.
It's a timing thing, because we're at, we're at March seventh. The next time this whole group meets is March twenty-first. So we would have put together a budget that the public could have seen prior to being here on March twenty-first. So it's, it, that's why I'm saying it's a timing issue, we need to know where you stand on, on these options, or at least the seven hundred.
Do you want to know that tonight?
That would help me.
All right, boy, so that we can now move it towards, uh, whether or not we can do that tonight, or whether or not we can do some things in the interim to get there prior to the fourteenth or the twenty-first. Dr. Brennan, you want to say?
I just think it's very complicated, and I think, I think this is great information. We have two board members who are not here.
True.
I think it, I think it's a, a bigger topic than we can take on at, at this board meeting. But I appreciate what Dr. Edwards is saying, and I think we've had a lot of discussion about the budget, and there's some still areas in there as far as people in the comments. And so I'm not sure how, maybe you want to receive our comments before the, the work session, individual board members, or how do you want to do that? But I, I, as, as someone who kind of understands it a little bit, I still find it hard to digest and decide what I, which option I would pick. And I do understand that each option is not gonna make that seven hundred thousand dollar goal that we want to get.
All right, uh, we, when you all are speaking, I hope we're moving us closer to deciding what we're gonna do about this.
Well, I was gonna.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Dr. Day, please.
I'll just tell you what my choice is, I choose option three, which eliminates the need for the seven hundred thousand.
Which puts us in keeping with the city?
Yes.
Yeah. Dr. Carter?
I like option three, and I know that we can't continue with the current, but I'm going with option one. I think we just need to call a vote, so that the, um, Dr. Edwards will know, and her team will know how to proceed.
Are you, are you making the motion?
Yes.
On what option?
I move that we adopt option one.
Motion dies through the lap of second, all right, who else wants to say anything else, start today?
I move that we adopt option three.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been seconded for option three. Now, with the floor is open for further questions and discussion on option three. Dr. Brennan?
Can you, can you just clarify what you said before, as far as if we did option three, which is approximately three hundred thousand dollars, what were you saying about that would not?
Yeah, the way I understand this is, option three specifies the, the district's percentage versus the employee's percentage, but the dollar amounts are adjusted, so that we don't need the extra seven hundred thousand. It, the dollar amounts would go up to cover our anticipated expenses, and we would not need that additional seven hundred thousand anymore.
I thought the, that Dr. Edwards is saying that the, the extra amount that we would get from option three was about three hundred thousand dollars.
It's based on our current employees, not new, but we always budget family plan for new. And there's some other variables that factor in that as well. But when we were looking at it, we felt reasonably comfortable that we could do it. If, if we move to a cost-sharing model, we could, with the existing money that you've already put in for health insurance, that we can move in that direction and not fund it with additional seven hundred thousand dollars or additional money.
Even though it's only three hundred thousand dollars?
That's what's projected, and that's part of where we're.
And I think that, I share, I think, a little bit of disconnect, because I'm hearing a seven hundred thousand dollar figure, option two gives us a five hundred thousand dollar surplus, or, and then three gives us a three hundred thousand. And I'm trying, I'm trying to eliminate, I'm worried about that seven hundred thousand dollar shortfall.
But remember, the, the seven hundred thousand dollars was if we just didn't do anything. So remember how I did the math, that's why it's very complicated, as Dr. Brennan says. If we just collected twelve, one sixty-eight in premiums, and the money that we already had in the two little slush funds, if we, I don't like that word, no, take that back. The health.
Supplemental.
Supplemental health funds, there you go. That would only give, get us to the, to the thirteen. That would be if we only collected the same amount of premiums from everybody the way that we had been doing that in the past, in the current year. So do you see where I just kind of used the current year? We're still gonna increase the retirees and the Cobra, we have to do that. So that's gonna factor in, into that as well. So that's where we're kind of calculating.
Uh, Dr. Carter?
And also, Mrs. Capazzi, you stated that it will also automatically increase the forty-four individuals that are from the other boards, with this number three, option three.
Okay, so, boy, at the present time, we do have a motion on the floor made by Dr. Day for option three, seconded by Dr. Sinha. I have heard Dr. Brennan give some level of unreadiness, and maybe if we vote tonight, we're not as clear on what we're voting for. Mr. Tros is figuring some things out in his head. Your thoughts ought to be, when will we ever be absolutely clear on this? And does that mean calling a special meeting of the board? I'm not suggesting that we have such, but all over the state, people spend a whole bunch of hours on this. And we don't appear to want to commit it to do that as such. So are we suggesting that we're gonna have a special call meeting just for this matter? And how many hours to get clarity or understanding on this complicated issue? Or are we ready tonight to do this vote? You all have had a history of coming to the work session in whatever year the voting is, and changed your mind. So, that, like, this has to be etched in stone tonight. So I'm in favor of us doing something tonight, but I just wanted to throw that out so that nobody walks away thinking that we were rushed, pressured. Just giving you some thoughts of options. But if there are any further questions or discussion on the motion before we ask the clerk to call the roll. Uh, Dr. Sinha?
I just want to make sure I'm interpreting these, these histograms correctly. So comparing the health insurance premiums by plan for the schools, if we switch to the, a distribution comparable to the city, then the major beneficiaries of that are going to be employees with children, employees with family. Because we will, the schools, as part of our operating budget, will take on a larger. larger share of their premium. But if the total cost goes up, the total premium goes up, but our share of it also goes up for those groups. Okay, thank you.
Oh, let me, uh, Dr. Carter, this is off the pump, but on the point. With our advocacy, we're going to have to do a whole bunch of advocacy. However, this goes down right after the 21st, is this board resolved to do all the advocacy that we need to do, or we're going to have to do to go across the street?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, thank you, Dr. Carter.
Just another question to check my understanding. So, under option three, would we still be just collecting the 12,001,68, assuming all other things being equal, this year to next year?
It will.
We're just shifting how much each party pays?
It will probably be more, because I don't have the, what the premium would cost for next year. I don't have that projection. So, and that's why I just tried to be real clear about, I added the exact same number for premium collected next year as this year, but it will probably be more that we collect from everybody than we've done in the previous, than we've.
Because there's more people, or?
Because the premium goes up.
Oh, it will go up.
Oh, yeah, the premium.
The insurance agent says it goes up about at least seven, 17, 7%.
Okay.
You can count on at least 7%.
Okay.
Do acknowledge that Dr. Gupta and Ms. Preston are not here tonight, but, Dr. Brennan, you want to say?
I would just add that I think that if the board does decide to vote tonight, that the, that, that option three is the most advantageous to the employees as far as the benefit that they're going to get. The increase in the premiums for, for all the other categories can be relatively small. There's going to be a significant benefit for the employees with family. There's going to be some significant contribution, which will be somewhere at $300,000 plus. So I think in light of the fact that we all know that at some point we're going to need to increase premiums, this is, this is probably a reasonable start and a relatively small start. Again, more than half of our employees are employee-only, and they're going to go up $2 per paycheck.
Exactly.
And that's the biggest group. And there's going to be a group that's going to visit a bigger benefit. So I think if this group in their wisdom decides they do want to vote tonight, I would vote for option number three, because I think that's probably the most beneficial to the employees.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Brennan, uh, Dr. Day?
So I just want to make two points. What we're deciding here is going to ultimately affect the budget that we sent to city council. And then whatever they approve, even if they just approve what we asked for, that doesn't bind us to this. As I understand it, they just approve a bottom line, a total. Then we can then rejigger the distribution of it, once we know what the actual dollar amount we have to spend is. So we could fine-tune this after it's approved by city council, if we, as we look into it in more detail.
Dr. Day, I think you, the distribution, just the way you're saying it, I just want to make sure that the beauty of what you're saying is still covered by the fact that whatever we say we're going to do, that's what we want to do. That we are very purpose. We're not trying to get, am I out of order by what I?
No, you're right.
You're right. We try, we try to do that.
That's right.
I'm not, I'm not trying to.
I got you. I'm with you. No, I'm with you. I'm with you. I'm with you.
And the, the second point I was going to make is that if, just in terms of parliamentary procedure, the motion on the floor is to proceed on the basis of option three.
That's correct.
If we're not comfortable making that decision, then you should vote no on the motion.
That's it.
It doesn't obligate us in any way, other than that.
Very well said. Any further questions or discussion?
And one other, I was toying between different options here, but I think option three, in terms of going across an advocating board, it does give us some consistency with our city employees.
True.
So that's a good basis for that decision. And it, it protects us, I think, for the future. So I guess I'm talking to myself.
No harm for the consistency there.
I'm trying to decide amongst myself, but I think that's.
I think everybody's had something to say. Mr. Andrews, did you want to, you feel okay?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. Then if there are no further questions or discussion, if the motion on the floor is that we would embrace option three, and then that will carry over into discussions on the 14th to 21st. All right? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes, you approve? No, you disapprove?
School board member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, board. And, uh, Madam Clerk, let's make sure that Ms. Preston and Dr. Gupta immediately have made aware of what was at least discussed tonight on this. I think you all did a fine job on, we've done a fine job on, Dr. Edwards, we're getting much better.
You all are excellent.
All right. Let's move into new business. And these items would be for information lodge in part. And so the specification, education annual plan, item one, Dr. Edwards, for Ms. Daniels Bosh.
Yes, and I believe she is on via Zoom. The annual plan comes annually for discussion and then board approval. So, oh, there she is, Ms. Daniels Bosh.
Good evening, Dr. Coleman, Dr. Edwards, members of the board. This is an annual document that is done. It's an agreement between the local school board and the Virginia Department of Education. It's to implement services mandated for students with disabilities. And this accordingly deals with the distribution of the funds that the division is contingent upon approval from the board. Lynchburg City will apply for approximately 2.5 million in flow-through funds. This is funds that are supporting salaries and benefits for special education staff. Again, it does require approval so that the finances can be reimbursed to us from the state. The total amount will be used to provide salaries, as well as 188,000 of it will go to flow-through funds for parentally placed students with disabilities that are in local private schools or homeschool. We will also use, apply for 60, little over 68,000 in Section 619 preschool funds. This funding will be used to support Hutcheson Early Learning Center and their programs, and provide special education and related services for students ages two to five who are determined eligible for special ed. These funds will include some staff development, instructional materials, and some special education placements. So it's for information tonight. It will come back in April for consent. Not sure.
No time for some questions? So it looks like we'd be okay to wait on April for this? Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you, Ms. Daniels Bosh, for giving us the clarity on that. We appreciate it greatly, and the work that you all are doing.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, please go, Dr. Brennan.
That if there aren't any questions between now and then, could we put it on the consent agenda for next meeting?
Yep, we can always pull it, Madam Clerk, put that on the consent agenda unless there's somebody that objects to it tonight.
For the modern work session.
For April meeting.
April meeting.
The April, if, whatever. Yes, Dr. Carter?
I just didn't see any figures on here.
Yeah, I didn't either, that's why.
So that's why it's not.
Yeah. Dr. Edwards?
There are. You have to scroll through. On one of the tabs.
Tab.
Oh, yeah, on some of the tabs, yeah.
Yeah, you need to go all the way over.
Which tab is it?
Oh, this is this. Well, if you go to 611, those are the 611 funds that are being requested. The 619 tab has the funds that are being requested for 619. So each of those tabs has different amounts that are being requested in the grant.
These are different requirements from the states, and each of those tabs are set up by the Department of Education as things that we need to complete as part of this annual plan that we do.
All right. So, anyway, I think we can work out the tabs at the bottom, et cetera. This will be on the consent agenda for the April meeting, first meeting, unless someone decides to request for it to be pulled. All right?
Yes, sir.
All right, sounds great. K2, thank you again, Ms. Daniels Bosh. K2, donation to Heritage Elementary School, Dr. Edwards.
That's right. So, we do have a policy that says if a group wants to donate anything over $5,000, that I just need to share it with the board. So, Ms. Katie Roosevelt and the McGuire Foundation are donating $9,200 to Heritage Elementary for their fourth and fifth grade students to attend their upcoming field trip. So this will defer the cost of that. Fourth grader's going to Jamestown, and the fifth graders are going to Virginia Beach.
All right. Dr. Day?
Just a question about how do, does a, a group, what's the process for making a donation? Do they contact you, say, you know, a civic group, saying, we want to buy some new playground equipment for such and such a school? How, what's the process?
Good question.
Typically, if, if it's for a school, they'll reach out to the school principal. So this group reached out to the school principal. School principal's like, oop, this is over $5,000, so they, it comes to me to put it on. If it's over $1,000, it can come just to me for me to say, but if it's over $5,000, I bring it to the school board.
And that, thank you, Dr. Day, for that question, because some people in the public may find ways in which they want to do likewise, and it is acceptable through the process. So thank you for that. K3, donation to Sandusky Middle School.
That's right. We have very generous community here. And we had a donation for musical instruments under the Mr. Holland, Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation, which is about 25, a little over $25,000 worth of the following instruments, which will be going to Sandusky Middle School. So you can see that there are saxophones, flutes, trombones, drums, clarinets, which I used to play, all for a donation. So we're grateful for that.
Questions on that? Thank you, Dr. Edwards. I do want to thank this board for your conversation in the last meeting. I want to thank Dr. Brennan for really trying to dig in and find a good place for us to land on a concern he had. So I want to turn the floor over to Dr. Brennan now in relationship to the joint city school facilities study work group.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And I know the hour is late, so I'm going to try to keep this under an hour.
Please.
Oh, that's good.
It'll be very short. So, at the last meeting, we discussed the fact that, that how important the facilities plan is going to be for the schools as far as redistricting, new schools, closing schools, education, and we all, I know we're all on the same page with that. So my concern really was communicating the process to the community and to ourselves and city council, so that, as the process progressed, as Dr. Wodoka has pointed out over the next several months, that no one feels that they've been left behind or not knowledgeable about it. Dr. Wodoka has made some comments tonight, and has, I think, is very supportive of the fact that the community is going to receive information on a regular basis through various venues. So I think the community part is taken care of. I'm still concerned about city council, and to some degree, our onboard, mostly about city council. So, last time we did this, I suggested a motion that we make an ad hoc committee under policy BCFG to the school board. Dr. Wodoka and Dr. Edwards were nice enough to meet with me and calm me down about that idea, and say, why don't we just look at this? I'm sure you should thank them. So, in your agenda, you have that there's a facility study work group under this item. And that is listed, that we have administrators from the city of Lynchburg, and we have administrators from Lynchburg City Schools led by Dr. Wodoka. So we have this group working already. And what I like to suggest is that, rather than make a new committee, that we actually use this committee, and that we appoint two members of the school board, invite two members of city council to participate in that meeting, and ask Dr. Wodoka and his team to, to embrace those individuals as far as being able to come to meetings, that they can get information to then bring back to their respective boards. So, not talking about an ad hoc advisory committee, like to work with the committee we already have, and invite two school board members, whoever would like to volunteer, and then go to city council and ask them if they'd like to participate, and hopefully they would appoint two people. So to facilitate things, I'd like to make a motion, just to get this going, and we can discuss then, there's a second to it, then we can discuss it and move on. So my motion is that the Lynchburg City School Board recommends that two members of Lynchburg City School Board and two members of city council be appointed to the facilities study work group. If the motion is approved by the board, then the LCS board chair and vice chair would accept names from interested board members who would like to be appointed, and the chair and vice chair would ask the mayor and vice mayor to appoint two representatives from city council. And if approved by the board, the LCS administration would facilitate the participation of these members in the work group, and a regular report from the board representatives would go to school board and would go to city council to keep them up to date. So that is the motion for tonight. Mr. Chair?
All right.
Second.
All right, then seconded, will you go to second to Ms. Andrews?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Day, let's, Mr. Andrews going reckless. So I think Dr. Brennan has made it clear on what this is not, and he's trying to articulate it, what it would be, and how that process would, in that piece, if, if it did work out, where the chair and vice chair would be selecting two. Just letting you know, it wouldn't be me. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be one of the ones at all that would be representing the board. But I, I do want to acknowledge that Dr. Gupta, who is not here tonight, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think he's, feels better about it, since it's going to be more of what you just said. But it is concerning that we do not give the, the group that we hired any impression that we do not think that they're doing anything but a stellar job at what they have been doing. Am I articulating, you all understanding, I'm trying to convey Dr. Gupta's thoughts, that we, that we're not suggesting that something hasn't been done right, as much as we're trying to increase communication?
Right.
So just a question, it's my understanding that this facilities study work group is part of the process that the consulting firm has intended. So, we're just suggesting that four new individuals be included in that group, that we're not tipping over the apple cart any more than that.
I think that's the goal of this motion, is to try to dovetail this group into the group that's already meeting, already has, working with the consultant, will continue to work with the consultant.
I think this is much better than the original idea, which would add a new layer to things that wasn't part of what MGT had intended.
Does anyone like to speak against the motion on the board? All right. And if there are any further questions or discussion on it? Then, Madam Clerk, we have a motion that was seconded, so we're going to vote on it tonight. If you're in favor of what Dr. Brennan just said, with two governing board members from the school board and two members of council being selected to add on to this group, vote yes. If you're not in favor of that, vote no. Madam Clerk?
School board member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Andrews.
Dr. Andrews, yes.
Go on, Dr. Andrews. All right. Boy, I'm proud of you on that. Good job. Section L, superintendent comments?
Okay, just really quickly, it has been, like the kids said earlier, a very busy month since last month. Let me just get my notes here. Some of the things that we've been out and about, or I've been out and about with, we continue to meet with our community safety group, and we're grateful for the partnership also with LPD and the Ed Foundation to help us with some safety initiatives that we want to pilot at Glass. So I think we have another meeting this week with that community group as well. I had an opportunity, I don't know how good it is, to make a celebrity bowl as a part of the Lynchburg Daily Bread, their soups event that they have. So, looking forward to seeing my bowl, and whether or not it can actually hold soup. But that was fun, just community members all together, and we had a great time to do that. Met with other community groups to look at the possibility of having an education block party later in April to get families more involved in their child's education. Optimist Club, celebrated kids at the Oakwood Country Club, just some amazing things that our kids are doing in the area of CTE. Of course, got to read to pre-K, two pre-K classes, and fifth grade, fifth graders at Bass, so that was, I always enjoy that. And if you haven't had an opportunity to read to our kids, please do so. They absolutely love it, and they will keep you engaged in the conversation. MLK Walk, we did that, and very wonderful, and some, a nice stop at. and some, um, a nice stop at, um, the cemetery, um, which was an excellent addition to, uh, the whole program uh, that we had there. Of course, let me scroll down, because it's a lot here. Um, we'd like to thank Senator Kane for visiting Bass Elementary School last month. Um, and again, he read to our kids, and he knows that they're very engaging. Asked them lots of questions, and we, we're just thankful for his team. To that, want to thank, uh, Dr. Gupta's not here, but he did join us on Bus Driver Appreciation Day as we served breakfast to, uh, the bus drivers and bus aides and the transportation staff. Um, kudos to my team for the Education Career Fair that we had on Saturday, February 25th, uh, where we were trying to get new people to join our wonderful LCS team, and it was, it was a great event. Um, I have participated on, in addition to getting us ready for our strategic plan, I also helped the Ed Foundation with their first, uh, strategic plan meeting, because they're doing a new strategic plan as well. And the Business Alliance is also doing a strategic plan. So, um, LCS has their hands in a whole bunch of community things because our community partners are important to the work that, um, we do. And I wanted to mention that I did attend the PIE board meeting, which was held at the Downtown Y in the teen center. And we got to have a wonderful presentation by Tariqa Grooms, who is a teen center counselor, and they're doing some phenomenal leadership work, um, down at the Downtown Y. It was just a really informative, um, presentation that she gave for, uh, the kids that attend, and we have kids that actually go and participate in their programs, and they're looking to expand. So I did want to mention, um, that as well. And again, congratulations to all of our teams, um, basketball team, track team, forensics, I mean, you name it. I heard states, 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 Skills USA. Our kids are doing it. Um, so we are excited. We're planning what we're going to do in May, so we're gonna be moving our May work session, I think, to Heritage High School. That's the largest space that we could find that wasn't occupied, so that we can celebrate our teams, our students, who have accomplished these regional and state, um, state accomplishments, awards, um, whether it's the forensics team. And the other thing that I really like is you're hearing a lot about combined, um, groups. So the combined drum line team that is middle school and high school, uh, you heard the kids talk about the cosmetology, which is a combined, um, class at, at Heritage and, and GLASS. So this board, along with us, will be taking our show on the road and honoring our kids, um, at the beginning of our work session in a similar fashion as we did for the two football teams at city council.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and again, you're doing a remarkable job. She gets to every aspect of this community, and, uh, it's just very admirable. You and your team, uh, always see, it's just amazing. All right, we're gonna go, our comments will start with Mr. Trost.
I want to second Dr. Edwards', uh, mention of the education block party coming up in late April. It is so important, I think, to get the parents, guardians, family members involved in our children's education. And I really, uh, hope we get a nice turnout at that block party, and hopefully my schedule allow me to be there. Really looking forward to that. Um, also want to, uh, give another shout out to the Education Foundation. Looking forward to our breakfast with the superintendent, and I appreciate all that the Education Foundation is doing for our community, and specifically our education for our children.
Thank you, Mr. Trost. Dr. Senha.
Well, I have a few things. First, kudos to Pioneer Theatre's production of Cabaret. Uh, if you didn't see that show, you missed something really great in the way they transformed the theater. The, the audience was part of the Ca- uh, Ca- Cabaret. And as you know, this is a story that's set against the backdrop of fascism's rise in Germany. It was a bold choice, uh, but appropriate given fascism's rise currently, resurgence, and including here in America. And the students, I am so proud of them. Their production demonstrated their ability to handle controversial subjects and adult themes, and the maturity of their performances, because, you know, for a high school play, it's watered down. And a lot of these, the characters become caricatures. But the way they portrayed them, they were people. It was really well done. I'm so impressed. Um, so the maturity of their performances matched the seriousness of the story, and the student performer showed a level of maturity and complexity that some adults in our town would be wise to model. So I congratulate them. I enjoyed board games with buddies at Sandusky Elementary School, where I learned how to use games to reinforce the things that students are learning in school, and that was fun. Last week, I spoke to the early, to early college students in the political science class, and that was a very engaging conversation. Those students, I, I wish I would have allowed more time, less time of me talking and more time of them telling me things. And I've asked to be invited back if there's time, and I think I might get to go back. Um, really bright students.
Great.
I'm grateful for the opportunity I had to see Tim Kane during his visit. I found him to be a very humble, well-informed man, very approachable. Um, so I'm really grateful for his time spent, um, with the city schools. And today, as I mentioned earlier, I mentioned the first of four training days in Charlottesville on, uh, fiscal governance, tying the fiscal to the instructional primarily for student success. And so I anticipate that to be very helpful. I wish we could have taken advantage of it earlier in the year. Um, but nevertheless, it's, it's a worthwhile program. So I'm grateful to, uh, the schools for paying for my attendance there and for transportation. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Outstanding. Dr. Brennan?
So I'm gonna follow Dr. Senha's lead and talk about the outstanding drama programs that we have in Lynchburg City Schools. So, uh, the theatre students from Paul Lawrence Dunbar School of Innovation brought home National Excellence for Ensemble Award in Atlanta. Um, a special shout out to Mr. and Mrs. Carter, who's in charge of that program. Um, Mr. Carter has been with Lynchburg City Schools for 32 years, trained under Dunbar, and I hope he never leaves as far as the job that he does there. It's really unbelievable. Um, I had the opportunity to go to Lincoln Middle School for their performance of Lion King, which was a great middle school play. There was a lot of enthusiasm, less talent, but it was really fun. You could really see it. It was really so great. And they had, like, 40 kids participating, and the auditor, the caf- the cafeteria was full, so it was really a treat. And then lastly, I want to thank Dr. Coleman and Dr. Edwards. We're nice to thank myself and my wife for the Beacon of Hope, uh, time. But I want to thank all those people who took time to come. It really was a great group, and it was, it was, it was significant time commitment. Uh, but I want to thank the school board members, Dr. Coleman and Dr. Carter and Mrs. Preston and LCS administrators, including Dr. Edwards and Dr. Sam Coleman, Dr. Derrick Brown, and also Mr. Beatty from, from Heritage High School came. And then we had representatives from city council, including Mayor Stephanie Reed and Councilmember Dolan Wilder and Taylor were part of the group. So I think everyone's trying to demonstrate the support they have, not only for the Beacon of Hope, but for Lynchburg City School. So thank you all for taking the time to do that all night.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. That was outstanding. All three of you, thank you so much. Dr. Carter?
Dr. Senha took most of mine, but I also presented to the political science group at, um, CBCC for the early college, and the students were really engaging. And I think, um, it helped me, having just come from the Capitol Conference, to just make them aware of some of the different bills that were on the Senate and the House floor, and they were interested in that. And also, I saw Cameron, the, um, the EC GLASS student rep there. And also went to the Cabaret, and I went, and I see, our focus was different. I thought the desserts were just amazing. So, the desserts were great, and that, that, um, the set was just impressive. And also, as Katie, Caitlin Snyder stated, that the seniors were, were honored, and every, the underclassmen honored the seniors that are leaving, and her brother honored her, and that was just great to see.
Yeah.
And Caitlin is, Katie Snyder is a former board member's daughter. So that was good in the Hope 23. That was great, and that was an awesome, just the stories that people talk about, and that we should never, ever, um, um, look down on someone's meager beginnings, or just where you come from, because a lot of times it really makes you who you are. Appreciate where you are. And also being there with Senator Kane, that was really good, and just being able to, um, address some of the concerns with him.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Very, very nice. Dr. Day?
Um, I guess I just want to say that, um, and I've said this before, I think both here and to a number of individuals I've talked to, that one of my particular goals is to try to understand what our classroom teachers face. Uh, the challenges, we may talk about the challenges here, but I, it's really the teachers who are the ones who will actually enact, who have the actual contact with students and will really make the difference. And so I said to a number of people along the way, including a number of teachers, uh, to encourage them to, uh, call or write to me if they have something they want to express to the board, uh, something they're concerned about, a suggestion they'd like to have. Uh, very few have taken me up on that offer. So, uh, any teachers out there that are listening, if you have something you want the board, or at least this particular board member to know, please don't hesitate to call me or, or email me. The, the LCS webpage has, uh, an email address and a phone number for me. So, um, I'm just encouraging people to contact me.
All right, and, um, very good, oh, uh, yeah, I put up.
Dr. Andrews. Is it Dr. Andrews?
Dr. Andrews.
Is it Dr. Andrews?
Just say it. No, 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 I'm clear on, I'm clear on Andrews. I was just trying to, I was, I'm clear on Andrews. I was just trying to figure out how I wanted to comment on. Very good, uh, Dr. Day, but I do want to encourage the board members to, to remember that we really want to push people with concerns to the superintendent. Um, and, um, but anyway, I, I think that each of you will gum yourself accordingly in that regard. Uh, Mr. Andrews?
Uh, I want to give a shout out to the Legacy Education Center on Rivermont Avenue, what they're doing to add value to their workforce development program. Randy has been, his guy, the guy's name is Randy, he's been keeping Randy and I in the loop of what's going on, and we've visited his, uh, his program a couple of times. He's, he's just doing some really wonderful things. And then just continue to be grateful for our school principals as they lead our schools daily. You know, we got a chance to spend a closed session with some, and then, uh, got a chance to hear some really good discussion feedback, and I just value them. So, uh, that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Andrews. Thank each of you for your sharings tonight. I do want to, one more time, say to Dr. Edwards and your team, thank you for getting around to all of these schools, all of these communities, the countless hours, uh, Ms. Deputy Superintendent Pugh and Dr. Wodoka, Ms. Capazza, all the directors, everybody that's been on tonight, I see Derrick Brown's name that we didn't mention, just thank you. Uh, you know, you go a lot of places, you see a lot of things done wrong. There's a lot right that's going on here in Lynchburg. I do also want to remind you all that 58 years ago today was Bloody Sunday. And isn't it wonderful that here in Virginia, our first African-American, uh, woman has been duly, uh, installed uh, as a United States Congresswoman, first that we've had here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I think that this is a great day. I also want to remind you that we would have been at our regional meeting in Mecklenburg County to see the new high school there, and it's gonna take me the next eight months to make that up to that team that I promised that we couldn't be there. But I do want to thank Priscilla Lagone for taking our artwork, uh, to the regional meeting tonight, and of course, we'll see whatever the outcomes may be from that. Uh, the last piece of our meeting for tonight is the informational items, and so we are clear on the 14th of March, everybody's welcome to come for financing facilities. The breakfast, as has been alluded to, on March the 16th, the public hearing on the 21st of March for the budget, and our work session on the 21st, and, uh, our joint meeting with council is gonna be on the 28th of March. And then we'll go into April, uh, with our April board meeting. If there's nothing else to be said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
All right.